Okay, it's 7 o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting of your order. My name is Jerry Fox, I'm co-chair of the GBUS. This is the February 18th meeting of the GBUS. And first we'll do introductions on my right.
Erin Boone, Roads and Utilities Supervisor.
And I'm the Fire Supervisor on my left.
Robert Sinter, Co-Chair and Public Safety Advisor Committee Supervisor.
Good evening, Christina Hendrickson, Parks and Recreation.
And the Girdwood Board of Supervisor is subject and its subcommittees are subject to the Urban Meetings Act. First on the agenda is Agenda Approval. Anybody got any changes they want to make to the agenda on the board? Hearing none in the public. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Seconding.
All in favor? Next up, January 21st Meetings Minutes. That was our last GBUS meeting.
I approve and thank you much to approve the January 21st Meeting Minutes. Second.
All in favor? Meeting Minutes from the GBUS LUC Quarterly Meeting. It was held before the GBUS meeting last month.
I approve and make the motion to approve. Second.
Third up for Meeting Minutes is the January 28th MOA GBUS meeting. We add to the meeting.
I approve and make the motion to approve January 28th MOA Meeting Minutes.
And Robert?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I'll abstain. I give them.
Okay, announcement. Public is encouraged to ask questions, provide comment, please raise your hand, we'd be acknowledged. Please take side conversation for foyer. There is a special GBUS meeting regarding the 2018 Roads and Parks and Rec Budget Review and Accomplishments will be held Wednesday, February 20th at 9:00 a.m. in this room. That still on?
Correct.
And just so the board knows, we are being filmed tonight. This is our first filming.
Is it live somewhere?
Not yet.
Oh.
It'll be put on YouTube.
So, that'll be embarrassing.
Yeah. I hope the meeting's lawyer doesn't see the way she can redo Robert's rules here.
Introductions, presentations, and reports. First up is ASD School Bond Proposition, Dean Mitchell presenting.
Should I enter?
Yep, and you can go stand here.
I have to apologize, first of all, I, it's so hard for me to get down here because it's such a long drive.
And don't touch the microphone.
And it's so beautiful.
I, I'm so grateful to you all for making that full moon appear for me. Is this close enough?
Yep.
Okay. I have, I was actually just trying to pull up the details on the bond. I have flyers here. Do you want me to pass these around?
Sorry, I don't have them.
So, we do have, I, I have to apologize, I was trying to pull up the detail. It's been just a crazy past week. I was in Juneau last week. So, I don't know for sure if there is a specific project for the Girdwood School. Do any of you know if the Girdwood School has anything specific on this bond?
No.
We do not.
You don't know or it doesn't?
We don't, we do not.
Okay, so I will have to get back to you on that. This bond, there are two schools in Anchorage that are really getting past the end of their useful life. And we were planning to have design and build on this bond for those two schools. And then we thought we would wait another year on those because we would wait until the lack of bond debt reimbursement goes away on the part of our state. But we, everything's been thrown up in the air this past week. So, but the bottom line is that we are doing a lot of roof replacements and restorations. And a lot of people talk about why our roof replacements are so expensive. The earthquake was a really good example of why some of those things are expensive. When we redid the roofs at Anchorage, at West and Roaming, we did a lot of seismic reinforcement. And those school, which was damaged pretty severely in the '64 earthquake, came through with almost no damage. So, when we do these roof replacements, we are doing a lot more than just, you know, putting new tower on the roof. So, there are five schools that are getting roof replacements and as part of that is a lot of seismic work. We're doing mechanical improvements. And then we're also putting a lot of money into safety and security. I don't know how many of you are aware of what happened at Denali Elementary School earlier this year. There was a shooting outside of the school. The front office person was able to immediately lock all the doors with one push on a button. It locked, secured the entire school and pushed a button and there was a police officer there within a minute. So, we want to make sure that all of our schools have that type of a system so that we can, so there's several things. One is line of sight. We want to make sure that all of our schools are retrofitted. Some of our schools have the office not right by the front door so the staff can't see people coming to the front of the school. So, we need to make sure the offices are located where they can see people or at least have a very good camera system, have that remote entry system, and have that automatic lockdown system. So, we're putting a lot of money into that, 12.6 million. Safety and code upgrades. O'Malley is not compliant with their sprinkler system and there's several other schools in there. And I really have to apologize that I did not do my homework on whether Girdwood is in here or not. But again, there's some planning and design projects. There's, we have a lot of deferred maintenance. We have $20 million. Actually, I think it's two, you know, my order of magnitude in math is not my strong port. I think we have 200 million less in outstanding bonds now than we did 10 years ago. So, we're slipping back a little bit on maintenance of our schools. So, we're trying to keep up with that. We have some deferred maintenance that we're doing. And then we did add, the original plan was to make this bond not exceed what we're retiring this year. But after the earthquake with the extensive damage in Eagle River and Chugiak, we did add another $4 million to the bond to be able to address their needs in this next year. So, the bond is going to be about $59 million. We're retiring about $55 million. And it's an investment, you know, a penny, it's penny wise or penny, pound wise and penny wise also, I guess I should say. Because if we can maintain the assets that we have, and we are the largest owner of space in the state of Alaska, we have almost 8 million square feet of space, then we can avoid more expensive problems down the road. So, that's pretty much where we're at. Does anybody have specific questions that I may or may not be able to answer?
Any questions from the board? My question would be, how should people in the public respond if they have a comment to the legislature about the governor's school?
That is such a good question. And when I was down in Juneau, I heard from several, I literally came back Friday night. So, I was down there when the governor released his budget. And my, what I told all of our legislators is, you know, you, it takes 45 out of 60 of you, you really do control, you can override the governor. What, in my mind, this is me as an individual, not as a representative of the school board, I think the budget is very, very pessimistic. And having been to the Iser lunch that talked about where we're at in our economy right now about three weeks ago, and the Economic Development Corporation lunch that talked about where we are poised with our economy, and Commonwealth North when Senator Ron Inhofe came down to present, we are at a point where we're starting to come out of our recession. We're seeing very, very modest job growth. And we're on a really, really good trajectory, assuming that we make the circumstances support that. And I don't believe that the governor's budget does. So, several legislators said to me, please encourage people to reach out. We need to have a grand swell of people saying, please oppose this budget, invest in our schools, invest in our university. You know, we look at things like where Amazon picked its new campuses. And I don't think they picked Washington DC and New York City because they have low taxes. I think they picked them because they have a vibrant community fueled by really great universities and, so, you got me on my platform, so, I'm sub box, I apologize. But yeah, definitely reach out to your legislators because they are the ones who can push back against the governor.
Thanks. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I love Girdwood, I love coming down here, and I love how supportive you all are of Alaska and our future. So, did everybody get a copy? Do we need more?
We have, I think there's.
We'll put some in the back.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to let this be.
Thanks for coming.
Check out the moon on your way home. Okay, next up on the agenda, Alaska Highway Pedestrian Safety Corridor Sweeps, Jim Anderson, AKA DOT presenting.
Good evening. I'm Jim Amis, I'm the Chief of Highway Design for Alaska Department of Transportation. And I'm here to answer your questions. I provided a written response to the initial letter with the concerns raised. I hope that my written response has already addressed them to at least some extent and be happy to answer any follow-on questions you or any of the members of the public might have.
We'll start with the board. I have comments. Who wants to start? You want me to start? Okay. We believe as a community that the way the sweeps are designed is a safety problem for our community. We feel that our children are at risk when they're on the path and they come up to the sweeps. We want to do something about it. I personally, and I'm not speaking for the board, I understand that we're not going to move that path. We don't have the money, you don't have the money, nobody has the money. We're not going to move the culverts. But there are things we could do to make it better. And I want to work with you to make it better. And, you know, I have some ideas and other people have ideas, but you know, one of the things that I would like to see is when the sweeps come down and they meet a road, that the path actually narrows. So, we paint a path that is less wide than it is, you know, it's supposedly 10 feet to the white stripe. We come back from that white stripe and we put in a painted line. Because one of the problems with that is the way that it's designed, it really jumps out into the road. If you watch little kids on their bikes, it actually is encouraging them to kind of go toward the road and then turn back. And I think there are things we can do without spending, without saying we want the culverts moved, which, we want the culverts moved, we want the path moved, but that's not going to happen. You know, in reading your, all the information you sent us, you know, after we complained, it looks like you have changed the design. And you have, I have to, I'm getting my little memo here that you said, where you made it, "The DOT changed the design in June of 2017 to place the sweeps adjacent to the shoulder rather than a part of the shoulder, which separates uses into dedicated independent lanes and avoids shared use between conflicting parties." And so, that's what we want. Somehow, can we work together to make that happen?
Yes, sir. First step would be is to go ahead and start working on a new project to make that happen. Because it will require a reconstruction of that pathway to put that change into effect.
And when you say reconstruction, you're saying?
Rebuild it.
I think, well, we're wondering if there are some things we can do before we get to that point. Because we know it will cost a lot of money to move the culverts. But there might be some things, like what Jerry mentioned, that we could do to make it better than it is now, safer.
The path as built is safe. I understand that there is a perception that it might not be. The statistics, the numbers, standards of practice across the United States all say that that path is consistent and is safer than the alternatives that frankly you're bringing up right now. The discussion of the redesign that we're talking about has been an ongoing discussion across the United States between a number of the professionals that I work with as to whether or not moving the pathway back so that it isn't included as part of the shoulder or not begs the question of at what point do the cars that come up to that intersection and make a right-hand turn without bothering to stop, at what point in that interaction are they at their slowest? And that's the place that we want to try and route the pedestrians and the bikes so that they have the best visibility and the most likelihood of being spotted and stopped to allow them to cross. So, by pulling it back to provide an extra six feet of setback or eight feet of setback to allow for that shoulder, might or might not actually be less safe than what we currently have built out there. The statistics are out and up for argument right now because there hasn't been any comprehensive study done yet. They're underway in a number of states, but the study results are less than conclusive to say the least.
Christina?
In your letter to us, and thank you for the detailed response in advance, I appreciate it, you said that the most reasonable next steps appear to be minor traffic control changes within the resources and consistent with standards. What would those minor traffic control standards be or changes be, and within what standards?
Well, at this point, the striping that was made as far as the adjustments that were already done is the minor adjustments that I was talking about. There are always additional things that we could consider. The challenge we're dealing with, just like the school district, we're currently in the middle of a very significant budget crunch. Any discussion of going out and adding additional paint or striping or markings all go directly into the face of, I don't have the budget for it, I don't have the staff or personnel to be able to implement it.
In your letter, you said that potential changes such as the additional striping and signing messages that was discussed in November with the Fire Department were reviewed and found not to be consistent with our current standard and beyond our current ability to install and maintain. So, is it a budget issue or is it a standards issue?
It's a budget issue.
It's not a standards?
Our standards are set based on what we can afford to do, not just here, but everywhere else across the region, that we also have to maintain consistency of that standard across the central region.
Could we do the striping and the sign installation within our own budget and therefore it wouldn't, it would be in accordance with your standards? Looking for the happy medium here, besides ripping up culverts in our road again.
We can have that discussion, but it's going to take a commitment to maintain it after it's installed.
So, you know, what we're talking about, just to be clear, you assume that I wanted to move it, but what I'm saying is just narrow the path.
You're talking about having us come in and add striping and paint?
By painting, yeah.
That I can't afford to A, put in, or B, maintain.
So, if we?
And the striping in question doesn't necessarily change the underlying structure that we're talking about on the ground.
Right, but I think it would make it safe. We believe that it would make it safe.
I understand that, that's what you believe.
It seems a common sense, and it's a common sense kind of approach, I think, but do we still maintain that path in the winter?
Be plowing.
And DOT should be plowing.
It's the DOT right away, but the community's always paid for plowing it.
Kyle, can you remind me what was the discussion and with whom about putting down, oh, not striking, but we said, the stencils? With whom did we have that discussion and why was that denied by the Department of Transportation?
Well, I think it didn't meet standards. We sent it to Scott Thomas for review and it did meet standards. But one thing that we did talk about with Scott when he was here with the Fire Department was the possibility of installing temporary bollards in the summer. And one thing that happens is that people confuse that as a frontage road, especially tourists, and we find them driving down it. Even though there are signs up there that say pedestrian only, they just don't see them and they drive down it. So, Scott had an idea at those sweeps, setback was to put these portable bollards up, which is similar to what we've done out here in the crosswalks, that just, which says state law requires stopping at crosswalks. It'd be something like that that says pedestrians only, no vehicles in that aspect. And it is on my to-do list to follow up with Scott to do that. And one thing we did talk about Scott was for the service area to pay for those signs and have them installed, and we would maintain them, take them up and down in the spring and fall. And if they got damaged or moved, we tried to get them back in place. So, that was one thing that we were discussing, instead of those stencils, which would be more apparent to people so they would have to actually drive into them instead of drive over.
And for clarification, would those be installed on either side of the sweeps or every single intersection along the bike path?
The focus was just the sweeps.
Just the sweeps.
Yep, where the cars are easily traveling off the road into them. That's where we saw most of the problems.
What is the approval process from Scott to you to get that approved?
No, the approval process would be through Scott, through the Chief of Maintenance and Operations.
So, we had some comments from the public. First, Chief?
So, you understand our concern that has DOT, anybody from DOT actually stood in the bike path area while the big commercial buses and other commercial equipment that comes down the highway, state maintained road, goes past those? As, and imagine yourself as a small child on a bike. So, you understand?
Would you like to watch the video, ma'am? Yes, we have. Yes, we've been down here. Scott Thomas has got the video, watching a couple of the kids that live in the community doing just that.
And you feel that it's the safest design right now in its current form?
I wouldn't have built it if I didn't believe it, ma'am.
So, I will not be going and picking up any dead community members that will get run over because of the sweep design, is what you're saying?
I think the design as currently built is as safe as I can make it.
Okay.
There's a difference between as safe as I can make it and totally safe, and we both know that.
Okay, so, you understand having the kids sort of swoop down onto the highway, right, where there's other people, which are tourists, a lot of tourists as well, motorhomes, that go up also onto the bike path because they don't realize it's a bike path? And so, like firstly, I'm sure I'm not the only person in the room that has gone and chased people off the bike path who were driving down the bike path, right? Because there's nothing to stop people from driving down the bike path.
Louis, you had a comment?
Yeah, the bike path is totally unsafe and high-tech issue with your issue that you believe it's safe. And here's why. Restriping is not going to solve the problem because the way that it's built, big picture, the sidelines drive people into the street coming in both directions. Restriping is not going to solve the problem for at least a year. You go out there and drive in the winter time, you'll see where people drive, this is, you can see it, two to three feet past the white line onto bike path. You can see it because the tires clear the snow. You can't have that bike path that close to the road.
Tommy?
I don't know if you're aware that you're in a building named after two children who were killed on the highway right out there? No. Girdwood, you know, for us, it's not budget or standards, it's political will and because we want to keep our children safe. And it, it's infuriating to have people come in and say, well, statistically, there won't be that many people hurt, or, you know, it's built to standards from, federal standards from the United States somewhere. That, that is, it gets people upset here because we value our children's lives and we've lost them on the highway. I live across from one of those sweeps. And I've stood on the inside of the white line and cars have gotten out of my way in that oncoming lane, which puts them in, in the other lane. And I'm legal and, but cars are feeling like because of my presence, they're going to have to move. Also, when you go out on a sweep, physics and centrifugal force holds you outward on that. Also, our children, the, our bike path is a way for our children to be more independent. And we like that. But we don't want to turn them loose on a road that's not going to be safe for them to be on. And patently is not. Children running, even if they're with their parents, they are not aware of the line in the road. They're going in a straight line and they haven't read the reports. And so, for us, it's a matter of not expediency or standards or budget, but a matter of safety for our children. And if you could get your head around that, you're in a building where children, named after children who were killed on the highway, two little boys, it might make your political will change a little bit.
Mike?
What kind of criteria, remember, did you use to justify moving at certain intersections like that up next to the road as opposed to keeping it back for a plus? What kind of condition was that principle?
We made the adjustments based on the locations and intersections that had higher traffic counts and had more vehicles coming in and out. The particularly low-volume side roads were the ones that weren't brought in as sweeps, including a bunch of the driveways that are along there.
So, those side roads garnered a lot of traffic? That was the reason?
Yes.
Well, this I don't understand because I live on those, there's only three houses on there. And it's a dead-end road, but it was one of the largest movements of that bike path along the whole thing. And for example, on Hocktop Highway over there, there isn't. It doesn't allow. And that's the one I've recognized intersection. It's marked. My intersection goes up to my house, it's marked. But like I said, it's only three houses. That's the one he's following out across the hill. So, I don't understand that philosophy that there was so much traffic on Glacier Creek Drive that justified moving that bike path out there. And if you're going to tell me there are so many accidents from people entering the bike path over the years that they were injured, the pedestrians were injured, I can remember, I can count on one hand from 1982 until the year 2000, how many injuries, accidents were on that bike path according to that? And you would have those accident reports. So, I don't follow that philosophy.
It isn't a question of philosophy. It's a question of design standards and going in and looking at every single accident, not just here in Girdwood, but the accidents that we see at all of the other intersections that we see in and around Anchorage and in the rest of the central region. And we look at every single one of those, try and identify what the contributing factors were for that accident and what we can do in the way of changing and updating those designs to best reduce or eliminate those risks going forward in the future. And the single biggest contributing factor from those accidents where kids and adults are being hit is because you've got people coming down a pathway, popping out directly to cross a road at speed, and the people coming down that road don't realize, or even when they do realize there's a pathway there, there isn't enough visual distance for them to react before they've got somebody underneath their front wheel.
Okay.
And that's, and that was what led to the change back in the mid-'90s to start installing sweeps across central region. And we've continued to try and refine that design to try and make it safer as we continue to do the installations.
I'll give you that. With their own O'Malley in intersections, that should probably justify the reason. However, here in Girdwood, on Glacier Creek Drive and some others, that is not. Like I said, I can count the number of accidents over here to repeat.
And if you hadn't one, it was too many, sir. If you hadn't one, it was too many.
I agree. But the emphasis or the responsibility is on the pedestrian. At one time, those intersections, the stop sign was for the pedestrian and not the vehicle. And DOT took it down.
Okay, so, Christina, you had a comment?
Sure.
I don't think we've got to resolve this.
I don't think we're going to resolve it either, but just so that the audience knows, your packet today contained the three pages of the letter, but there were a lot of other additional attachments. One of those was a memo from, through to Scott Thomas on June 27th, 2017. And on the last page, it did talk about the comparison of the bicycle vehicle crashes from 2003 to 2012 at 22 different intersections within the Anchorage area. And it says specifically, crashes of And it says specifically, um, "Crashes appear, um, to occur at approach types at roughly the same frequency as approach types in the city. No buffers are where crashes occur the most, but they are also the most frequent type of approach in Anchorage. No buffers appear to have slightly higher proportional amount of crap, crashes than the approach type while the buffers have slightly less crashes."
And the next one that talks about the severity of those crashes. And the severity goes up if you don't have the sweep.
And so what we're trying to articulate to you is that not only is it the severity of the sweep, but it's also the location of the sweep. And so if we have to wait for additional studies to be done, for other design changes and the state to get funding to address this, how can we reduce and eliminate the potential of those accidents by doing the restriping that we've requested? If we're talking about the bollards, what's stopping us from further having the discussion about the striping?
So, yeah, let me follow up with that, you know? I appreciate you coming down and being here tonight. Um, this is obviously a big community concern for us. It's not going to go away. We're not going to, you know, we're the type of community that doesn't let this stuff go away. We don't, we're going to fix this. At some point, we're going to continue when we're going to fix this. So what I'm asking you to do is go back to your supervisor and say, "What can you do to help us fix this?" Because we're not, we're not going to give up on this.
I just built the safest pathway for this community that I know how to do and what you're proposing as fixes will make it less safe.
Okay.
With respect, that's the best answer I can give you, is maybe you ought to let them sit for a year and see how they continue to perform.
They've been in for-
About a year and a half. And the last, the striping got adjusted this summer.
Oh. Okay, we're not going to solve this thing Michelle, so very quickly.
Okay, I was just going to suggest then, lower the speed limit for commercial vehicles like the buses and the big stuff that's coming into the valley, lower the speed limit for them. So at least the bus doesn't take somebody, right? Lower those people that are right along the, lower the speed limit.
You'd have to do it for everybody I would assume.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say the same thing for everybody, but, um, I don't know how popular that would be, but that would be one mitigating-
I had originally asked about that when the bike path went in and there's another one of those studies that says it's a highway and that's difficult to do.
It's a highway with a bike path.
And I, I know, but I'm just saying you what, I'm telling you what they told us. And that was that because it was a highway, and I didn't understand it because it goes down to 30 miles an hour and it's still a highway.
Right.
So I didn't understand and I said, "Well, what if we made it 45 to 40?" And they said, "Well, that would take a lot of studies and a lot of time." And I was, I didn't understand it, but I'm telling you that they-
Do you care for a simple answer? Your neighbors are voting with their foot. And until 85% of your neighbors decide that they're willing to slow down, the speed limit won't be going down.
Okay, you understand it's not our neighbors, it's, it's the visitors that come into the valley that don't understand that they're going to be happy to come out to the valley. They don't understand-
Okay. I want to, I want to just wrap this up because this, we're not going to, we're not going to solve this tonight. Real quick Louis.
I have an answer to your speed limit. Back in the day, the highway's speed limit was, um, 40 and, and, and all the way, all the way down. And it was, seemed to be too fast. So, um, there, uh, we complained and we wanted it down to 30, I believe, for the entire road. And the study, the travel study was done and they found that the average speed that everybody drove was 45, so they raised the speed limit. And then we went to the governor and said, "You need to put this at 30 mile an hour from here on." And the governor said, "Yes, so that's where you go, you go to the governor."
Okay, so we still have, and I think that's where we're going to have to go, I think it's going to have to be a political process from here. Because I don't think it's going, we're going to get anywhere we can deal with. So, I appreciate you coming down.
You have a nice night.
Okay, subcommittee reports, three minutes each. Trails Committee, Carolyn.
Good evening, I'm Carolyn Brodin, Chair of Trails Committee. We had our regular monthly meeting on Tuesday, February 5th. Um, we began in old business with our review of the Girdwood Mountain Bike Alliance Conceptual Master Plan. They had come to us first in November with a master plan map. We, and we asked them to come back with some more information on their map, which they came back in January. And then they were, we also were asking for some narrative and more details with their plan. So they, um, came back, let's see, I've got it my month's spiteful anyway. They came back with that last month, they got in February. Um, we had a lengthy discussion on all sorts of things, including the style of construction, um, fact that it includes a two-direction multi-use trail. Um, and, um, we also discussed the annual process that the Mountain Bike Alliance would go through for their, um, work, that projects that they plan to do each spring, um, which would include going to Harrah's Land Bank and back to Trails Committee. Um, I think all, we asked, we did have quite a few, uh, quite a bit of input from the community and Trails Committee members and, which they are incorporating into their document. Um, we did end up, uh, making a motion which was worded as, "This Girdwood Trails Committee moves to not object to the Girdwood Mountain Bike Alliance Bike Park Master Plan as presented. To move the draft plan forward to land use, Girdwood Board of Supervisors inherited land bank with suggestions from this meeting being incorporated in upcoming draft presented." We voted 16 in favor, two opposed, and three abstentions. Let's see, for the rest of our meeting, we, um, we discussed our 2019 trail projects, we're working on, um, which ones we're going to actually work on this summer between our, um, SDA crew and also we're planning to have two outdoor work parties with Girdwood Trails Committee and hopefully some other just, um, volunteer work parties. Um, we deceased, we received tentative award for our RTP grant to continue the work on the Lower Iditarod National Trail from California Creek Bridge up to the edge of the industrial park. Girdwood Trails Committee is looking for two volunteers who might wish to attend the Alaska Trails Conference in April. Usually Trails Committee will, um, pay for two to attend this weekend Trail Workshop in Anchorage. If you're interested, please contact, um, Margaret or, or come to our next meeting. And, um, I think that's about it.
Any questions? Thanks Carolyn, appreciate it. Girdwood Area Plan. Louis?
Greetings, I'm Louis, honored to co-chair of the Girdwood Area Plan Update Committee. Commission of the Girdwood Area Plan Update Committee is to fund and complete a transparent inclusive review of the Girdwood Area Plan to guide Girdwood land use in an orderly and understandable process that is respectful of all views. Um, we had a new member, uh, of the group, uh, that came, Terry Mercurio. Um, uh, as I'm speaking here, we're going to talk about two of the principals, uh, that are, are working with us, our contracted firms. Holly Spock Torres is, is, uh, one of them and Adam Hayes of Hayes Research is the other. Holly, um, uh, is going to complete revisions to the current public involvement plan and, uh, we discussed when to roll out the plan for local public review and decided that 45 days prior to taking the plan to land use and GBOS was that time period so that the outcome of local public review can be incorporated into the LUC and GBOS presentations. We once again reviewed the review process, which is the public review of 45 days, the land use and GBOS introductions and there, and then the next month on the, their, uh, presentations. Recommendation to planning and zoning in the assembly, planning and zoning introduction and work session, planning and zoning recommendation of the assembly, the assembly introduction and work session, then the assembly approval.
Do you have any further comments?
Did you get all that?
She's had the lead.
We discussed the, we'll get, we'll get more of that. It's hap, it's, it's the two years worth of process that we're going to be involved in in the future. We discussed the structure of the committee as it relates to LUC and GBOS and what is required in Planning Code. Robin Ward will check the language in the code regarding comprehensive plans and the committee will need to review the formation of resolutions to make sure that they are compliant with the code. We also discussed that our relationship with government, that would be this body, land use, the municipality, will determine our requirements to comply with the Alaska Open Meetings Act, which will be clarified through review of the Planning Code. This is an ongoing process that we're involved in here. We discussed that as outlined in Muni Code, Girdwood does not have a typical community council. However, by municipal ordinance, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors is the community council ex officio and the land use committee provides recommendations to GBOS based on their one person, one vote structure, which is exactly how community councils are put together. This includes Crow Creek Neighborhood, which is outside the Girdwood Valley Service area, but within the MOA boundary. Government-related committees and subcommittees are required to comply with the Open Meetings Act. Either way, trainings on the Open Meetings Act will be provided to all GBOS committee and subcommittee executive committees, including ours. Kyle was working with the municipal clerk's office to schedule this training. Holly reports that the survey launch was very successful as it launched on the 14th of January and 10 days later when we had our meeting, 514 surveys have been completed and of those, 404 have been validated. It's likely that most of the rest of those will be validated as well, but there is a process to checking multiple responses from the same IP addresses and such. Huddle did, uh, did another push on social media to encourage people who hadn't completed the survey, which, uh, was about, it ended on the 14th, it's three weeks from our last meeting. We will have another survey for our summer people, um, that will be open again and I believe that you all can participate in that one again. Adam will have a survey report for our next, uh, Girdwood Area Plan meeting, which is next Tuesday. Um, we did not have an officer election as planned. Um, our regular meetings are the fourth Thursday of the month in this room, but, uh, due to scheduling constraints, it will be next Tuesday, the 26th here at 6:00 PM. All our meetings are at 6:00 PM here. Anybody have any questions?
Thanks Louis. Uh, land use, I'm not seeing Brian and I was only there for portion.
I can give a quick synopsis, a lot of the things that we're talking about tonight.
Yeah.
Mike Edgerton is out and Brian can't attend tonight, so speak for them. Uh, so most, uh, they have the standard reports, um, and, uh, as they do, as in old business, uh, the main topic, uh, probably was the Girdwood Mountain Bike Alliance Conceptual Master Plan, which will be discussed tonight, um, and, uh, in more detail. Um, they also discussed the board and game, the fish, excuse me, the Board of Games proposals for 116 to 121 that relate to bear baiting, uh, within, um, uh, 14C remainder. Basically, that's where Girdwood sits in that hunting district of 14C reminder, remainder. And we'll discuss that further tonight as well, um, and give input on that. And, uh, they had new business, um, items, they're working on the parking changes within tile 21, chapter nine. Mike hopes to have proposal in March or April to present to LUC, um, and also GBOS. And, um, they had an introduction of a dimensional variance, which Marco will present tonight. So most of the things that were discussed at that meeting, um, were, um, will be discussed this evening.
Thanks. Any questions ladies? Most of the stuff we'll bring up. Next up, legislative reports. I'm going to call into John, I'll ask Adam, you can start and I'll call John, I think, if I know how, just-
9 or 1?
Nope.
I guess we'll just wait till this goes, this is going to loud.
No worries.
Hey John, it's Jerry, GBOS.
How are you?
I'm well, and I don't know, do you want to listen in? We are now at the point of our meeting where we're at the legislative report and Adam is standing at the mic, so I'm going to let him speak and then if you'd like to speak after him, that'd be great.
I always like listening to Adam.
Okay. Okay, Adam.
It's because I get to say all the wrong things first.
Press your on, Adam.
My name's Adam, I'm Suzanne LaFrances, Assembly H. She sends some greetings from Juneau. She had to head out tonight for the Alaska Municipally Conference and hopefully saving all of our local governments from being subsumed by the state legislature. Seriously, if you've seen the budget, it's terrifying. Um, one thing in it is that revenue sharing, what we call it, um, has municipality entries about $55 million from that. It's been nixed as a line item and rolled into just its undesignated general fund, which means God only knows what's going to happen to it. Um, we're hoping that that will be restrained, but obviously there's a lot to be very worried about with this budget as concerns both the municipality, South Anchorage, Girdwood in general. Um, so we definitely are encouraging anyone with any opinions on the budget whatsoever to get in touch with, um, Senator Geisel and Representative Johnston especially since they are representatives, um, down in Juneau. Big things up, Suzanne just wanted to bring, uh, attention to three of the proposed charter amendment changes. That will be on the ballots, that'll be mailed out starting March 12th. Um, all of this information is on the muni.org slash Assembly websites and the election information. League of Women Voters is doing another, um, pamphlet to explain these ballot propositions, but these ones haven't gotten much attention since they're mostly legal changes. One that deals with conveyance of, um, an easement at Goose Lake property, um, at Goose Lake Park for an MLMP thing. This is already something that MLMP uses. The only reason it's going to the vote, uh, to the vote is because the municipality can't do anything and especially can't sell that particular easement or interest in it, um, to anybody, including Chugatch Electric if the regulatory commission approves it without a vote, you know, without an approval of voters. So that one doesn't change anything involving the park, it's more or less just saying that Chugatch can have the easement that MLMP already has and uses. Assuming, of course, RCA gives its blessings. Um, there's another change that is just going to clarify some language over a provision called at least, um, the municipality's ability to do a lease purchase agreement. Essentially, this is basically rent to own and the most famous instance of it recently was the leased, um, property agreement for the former Taj Mahal, now current headquarters of APD downtown. That had to be done through the AEDC because of these restrictions and essentially this change just brings it into compliance with, um, the current state of, um, Alaska state And the last one is just kind of pure common sense. This may be something that looks somewhat familiar to Girdwood since there was a charter amendment that allowed Whittier to do parking, um, that just removed it. Well, the change here is to allow any public peace officer to deal with junk cars. Basically, we're paying just with salary over $60,000 for highly trained officers that we need out actually dealing with the more serious crimes in the community that are sitting for hours on end waiting for a tow truck to get rid of junk cars throughout towns. It's a horrendous waste of money and essentially what this does is it allows the APD officers to go out and actually do their jobs, which is what we need them to be doing, while letting someone else who has the time and, you know, the sufficient level of training take care of that issue. It's a particular problem more in the denser populations of the bowl, but we've run into complaints about it in South Anchorage. Hoping that's not too much of a problem down here, but we are hoping that you will support that as well. Those are the three main ones. Of course, the alcohol tax will be on there too. I'll be happy to answer any questions about that. The toxic flame retardant ordinance, this has been pushed back with the public hearing continuing on February 26th. The Assembly is doing some work sessions on that to get, um, a series of amendments in order to present on that, um, just to make sure that we have a strong ordinance, but also one that's legally and technically workable. And the last big item was a central business district tax incentive. Essentially, this won't affect property taxes anywhere in the municipality except the central business district, which is primarily downtown- central business district to build a core population, both to stimulate economic growth and to get more people in there with, so that a permanent living situation can spur not only the growth, but better public safety, since a permanent population will tend to deter crime, bring in different kinds of businesses and really just stimulate downtown and hopefully help stimulate the economy of the municipality as a whole. Suzanne managed to get an amendment passed to that that would sunset the tax incentive down there, to make sure it just didn't continue in perpetuity, but from what I understand, I had to leave the meeting to get on a plane to Washington DC. But that one got kicked back into another committee for another work session to deal with some of these technical issues. So if you have opinions one way or another on anything, or you have questions, concerns or comments, please let me know now. I'd be happy to take them back to Suzanne and if I can answer them, I will. And if I can't, John's there.
Do you, I don't know if you heard all that, John, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think I got most of it. You must have touched that microphone because a little bit of it was just car.
I'm not touching it. Not touching.
Yeah, it's interesting how the fire retardant, you know, we heard from, you know, advocates for banning them, we're pretty tentatively tired of this, to then slowly try to get industry people to speak up and lobbyists for various organizations talk to them. But then, who was probably the largest furniture retailer in the state spoke in our public hearing, he sent along email today, he's down in the Lower 48th, a big conference for furniture retailers. And he said that, that he didn't know, but for the most part, they've gotten rid of flame retardants in most upholstered furniture and mattresses. It was just a non-issue that they didn't, the manufacturers didn't announce it. So in his view, at least for furniture, it's kind of like unneeded. So we are in actually a very nice place where we could do something that charges ahead and leaves away and fighting poisoning ourselves and not really hurting anyone. So we'll see how that goes. What leakers out there though is electronics have fire retardant integrated in some, like your phone and then even some electronics and furniture and so on. And those are apparently some weird contradictory information. One group said they're banned and those places are banned and another person says, no, they don't ban them. And I think California did ban electronics, fire retardant and electronics, but unbanned them. So that's a little bit of a sticky point, but I think we're well on our way in this country getting rid of those poisons, so that's a good thing.
Got anything else?
That's all I got to clarify, I think Adam did a fine job.
There you go.
Oh, John, did you want to, I didn't want to mention this because I hadn't seen it until I got the packet, but did you have anything you wanted to say about the bear ordinance?
Oh, you know, I think you got that, I sent it to Margaret, I forgot we've gotten that at the quarterly meeting. But you know, we, because that is really very early, but if you guys go through that and see some things you like to add it, I actually sent in to the city attorney, I think there's a section in there where you have certain areas that would be special focus areas and I asked them to write, write something that would show what it would look like if we said bear cards required in Gerwood. So when this comes out, that'll be, that wording will be available. I'll send it to you when that comes out and when you guys see that, just so you can look at it.
Yeah, we have it on the agenda, I think, for tonight, if I remember correctly, somewhere. And we do have that amendment here, the draft.
What is, I'm curious what the Assembly's schedule is for looking at that.
I'm not quite sure, you know, let's see, this is, it won't be, it won't be introduced at our next meeting. So maybe the first one in March. Possibly introduce first meeting in March, I think it's the 5th and then maybe go into action on the 19th. I think we'll see how much interest we get in comments before we, you know, it could be two weeks later, I don't mind going a month for a lot of these things. But put it end of March, which is probably not terrible for them.
Okay. That's good for Gerwood.
Yeah, but you know, I know the bear committee here would like to see it in place before the summer.
Yeah, that's good work. And we got to coordinate with the Alaska Way, because it sounds like they have a lot of bear card. And Blue Arctic, I'm not quite sure if they can hear us.
In the packet tonight, there is the draft ordinance. I don't think it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
It's not on our agenda, but we do have the draft ordinance, which we can review. Any other comments?
Well, I will be down there Wednesday talking to the Chamber of Commerce about the plastic bag ban and then we're having a party at Mike's afterwards and I hope to see everyone there.
Why not? Okay, well, thanks, John. I don't know whether you want to just leave this on or whether you're going to go away. I assume you want to be to turn you off.
Well, you could turn me off because I have great faith in Margaret's minutes.
Well put. Thanks for calling in, John.
Sure. See ya, bye.
Thanks, Adam. Okay, next up, Claire, library report.
Hello, everyone, I'm Claire Agnew, I'm the Garrish Library Manager. Garrish Library was open for 163 hours and had 2,396 visitors for the month of January. Going through my spiel coming up, on Saturdays, we be jamming at 12. It's our music storytime for kids five and under, it's a lot of fun. Play instruments and dance, so that's the Saturday at 12. Reminder, baby time every Thursday at 12 for babies 18 months and under, we read books and lift up, I guess, we all, and then we play afterwards. And then, family storytime Fridays at 11, that's every week. Coming up is spring break, so we have some spring break programs. On Tuesday, we'll have arts and crafts. Wednesday, we'll have a new taste test, we'll be doing goldfish. Thursday, movie, Friday, video games. And I know ski day's on Fridays now, but we do have, we still have video games every Friday, 3:30 to 5:00, so if kids aren't skiing, they can come play games. A reminder that we proctor for students, if you need a proctor, if you're taking online tests or taking classes in Anchorage and you don't want to go to town, I will proctor for you, so stop by the library and we can talk. And as always, follow us on Facebook, facebook.com/APLGarrish. Any questions?
Thanks.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Kyle?
Sure.
Land use report.
Good evening, I'm Kyle Kelly, Garrish Service Area Manager. Starting with parks, we are going to be posting, we actually have one position or two positions posted right now, we're looking for two SCA interns for the summer. They will be trail crew for us, working on the trails, doing drainage, tread improvements, repairs, things like that. And so if you have any, especially a student who's interested in a summer gig and they get tuition vouchers and stipends and also a stipend for housing, please send them to the SCA or send them to us and we can show them how to get there. As well, we are going to be hiring a physician for the summer, a caretaker for the parks, basically a summer laborer who will help us with park projects, mostly with playground and existing park facilities. It's 30 hours a week and that job will be posted in April. So if you have a student or somebody who's looking for a part-time summer gig, it's a great job, you're outside most of the summer. And then we have gotten our campground host back, Emily Maxwell was our campground host last year, she'll be returning back to us after she runs the Ditterod. This will be her second Ditterod this year, so we're excited to have her back, she knows what to do. As for currently with the parks, they're pretty snowed in, but Margaret and I are handling all the trash collection, stocking, mud mitts. We appreciate everybody's efforts to pick up after your, your dogs out there, especially in the Nordic trails. We've seen very full bags and we don't mind handling those, so please keep up with that. If you see something that's empty, let us know or you see a problem. One thing that we do ask for people to do is not put residential trash into the garbage cans because they fill them up right away, that tends to be a problem we're having. So if you see a can full, give us a call, we'll take care of it. As well, if you do see any trees down out on the trails, let us know, we'll try to take care of them. If not, we'll mark them and deal with them as soon as it's safe to and get it resolved. You can always reach us at 343-8373 or give Margaret an email, which you can find on our websites. We want to thank the local Cub Scout troop and Mike Weddington for building two kiosks for us. They built these two information kiosks, one will be posted up on the skate park, the other one on the tennis court and it'll be a way for those friend groups who sponsored those two facilities to advertise what they do and try to get more people involved. And as well, we can put events up, like a skate event or a tennis tournament, things like that. So thank you to those Cub Scouts for doing that. Little Bears Playground, we have an assessment done last year and so we have a work list that we'll be tackling this summer for that. The Lions Club, we are working with them in their interest of building a cover pavilion over the Lions Club Park and seeing what we can do to help that come into reality. As well, we are planning a new trail from the back of Lions Club Park down to Glacier Creek, so people have easier access to go down to the creek from the park. And Skate Park, we just met with the group on February 7th, the Friends of the Skate Park, and they are planning right now for a fundraiser with Alyeska Resort at the Throwdown Showdown. It's a rail, I guess, park event that they have up there and all the proceeds from that go back to the Friends Group to help build ramps. With that, we have a new tabletop and plans for them to build this summer and we'll have a spring work party May 4th. So if you're a partake and, or your children partake in the skate park, we welcome you to come out on the 4th of May and help us with our annual maintenance that we do there. Last year, we built three ramps and maintained existing ramps through that, so it's a great volunteer effort that gets that done. Carolyn talked a lot about the trails plan from the staff aspect, or Trails Committee from the staff aspect, we're working on the plan on how to deal with the maintenance requests that were given to us this year. We put a big push in for things people want to see done on the trails, a lot of it had to do with muddy spots or maybe more gravel in certain areas, and so we're getting that list together, which we'll use with our interns to help tackle that through the summer and hopefully repair. As well, for long-term goals, we'll be helping maybe organize a Gerwood Trails Committee to tackle doing a master plan for the entire trail system, which will be more of a conceptual look at the trails and what you're going to do with different zones and if what, if you want to put more trails in or how you want them in trails. We just need something that's probably written down for, to go along with the maintenance plan that has been created by the Trails Committee, so we'll be working with that. Trail grooming is ongoing. We want to thank all the volunteers who've come out and done grooming on the trails out there and also with the Gerwick Nordic Ski Club and their sponsorship of providing a machine to do that as well. Closures, the hand tram, the campground are still closed, we plan to open up the hand tram in May, dependent on weather. As for the GBOS nonprofit grants, we're collecting all in your year-end reports from 2018. They need to be into us, actually just a few days ago, so those should be all in by now and we'll be starting the process of the 2019 grants, getting those out and paid to people once all paperwork is received. We have two grants that we have right now going on. We have a $17,000 grant for the rebuild of the California Creek on the Lower Ditterod Bridge down there. That bridge has collapsed and we have the funds in hand and we're just waiting for weather to rebuild that bridge next spring. And then we have also applied for RTP grants and we've been successfully initially granted $75,000 for continued work with the Lower Ditterod down there. So we saw that last, two weeks ago when we got approval for that. As always, Margaret does a great job of keeping our social media and websites updated and all current information in minutes are there from each meeting. And as Jerry pointed out, we, tonight for the first time, are recording meetings and then we'll put them to a YouTube channel for anybody who wants to see a meeting that couldn't attend. Cemetery, Tommy is here tonight, so I'm going to talk too much about it, but we do have a open house on Thursday, February 28th at 7:00 PM to unveil the schematic design plan for the cemetery. This is a chance for you to come out and see what the cemetery group has created with consultants and give input and feedback to that plan for a future cemetery in Gerwood. And as for roads, we had a plow out today, was happy to see the snow after a dry spell there. January was a really wet month and we ripped through a lot of sand in January, we actually had to get a little bit of resupply because we thought if that, those weather conditions continued, we would run out of sand, but it's funny, when you buy the sand and it stops raining. So that worked out good for us in that aspect, but the crew, appreciate them, they're up almost every night at about 1:00 AM and they go out and they do initial surveys, see if anything needs to be done and try to have everything ready for the commuters in the morning and for the buses coming in to collect kids. So thank you to Bert and Jennifer and for what they do each day for us. Little Bears is sort of a major project updates, Little Bears is our focus right now. We met with Capital Projects last Thursday and what we're trying to prepare for is a bond proposition for 2020 for the rebuild of Little Bears. And I have a meeting tomorrow with Capital Projects and their term architect to talk about the initial design phase, basically create a bond proposition package, which would give a concept and a cost for rebuilding Little Bears on the facility over there. We thank Karen Sakaro, she's been a great partner in this and her company, ECI, have given us pro bono services in the pre-development of a new Little Bears facility and we continue to work with her as we move forward on this and HLB in this design concept. So we'll be moving that forward. Some of the things that we're working on is that we have a Codex Change Amendment that will move forward for, when they did the code down here, the new code in Gerwood, they forgot to include allowable uses for daycare within a dedicated park. GBOS has already passed a resolution of support for that and so we're just going to get that change corrected because there is already a daycare within a dedicated park. And then the parking code change, as Mike Eggington is working on that with the parking group and that will be a requirement moving forward for a new Little Bears in that aspect. Quickly on roads, our bill for last month from the contractor was $45,000. It falls right in line with our averages for the last five years, which was mostly related to snow removal, sanding, peeling ice, things like that. Our current operational budget, it's brand new, we've only used 7% of the budget so far for the season. Our Capital Road Fund right now sits at $150,000. We will be moving $25,000 over into that fund shortly, so we'll be up to $175,000. And then our expended budget for parks, we've only used 3%, there's not much going on right now at parks besides utilities, so we only have about $8,200 spent out of our parking budget there. We have capital reserve right now of $68,000. We have encumbered $148,000 for the pedestrian crosswalk light, which is going to go out to hopefully bid this week. So I will keep you informed and for the board, I'll send you a link once it's posted so you can take a look at the posting there and pass it along to anybody you know who may be interested in bidding on it. We're hoping for a competitive, competitive bid on that. Police, we have only expended $1,000 of our police budget and that's for rental of the police unit or the police substation, but we just got two invoices for them for the last two months, so we'll be paying that shortly. And then fire, fire has gotten their initial contract payment of $185,000, so we've used 16% of that budget so far. And that is it. Any questions?
I'll make a comment. A couple of comments. First comment is good work on the RTP grant, that's exciting.
Yes, thanks.
That's a big deal. Thanks. That's great. And then anybody else in the community, you know, we get a good deal off of our roads project, roads crew. And there's two people, Jennifer and Bert, that do most of the work and they're up most of the nights and they work really hard. And if you see them on the road, just thank them because they do a really good job.
They might be a little guarded when you come up because most of the time I think people are coming to complain, so when you get a comment, it feels really good, so.
That's what happened when I went to thank them. They were worried I was going to complain. Okay, supervisory reports. First up, Robert, public safety.
Still waiting on a quote from Woody here for what a price on a contract rule will be. So once we get that number, we'll kind of compare it to what we could get for the same price from APD and they've kind of taken an attitude of, you know, we can do it, we just need the politicians to sell the price point that we're asking for. So we're kind of in wait there. The other, other thing is that Chief Weston really needs help with the fire department. If anybody wants to volunteer, she'd be glad to have you. That's all I got.
Okay, I don't see the Woody or Chief here. PCA, do we have anything new? Want to say anything, Mike?
Okay, just make a point, within your packet tonight, there is-
Within your packet tonight, there is a summary of the police activity for the last year, and we put it into a table. And if you'd like to see the individual police reports, they do monthly reports to us. We have those on the GPOS website as well, but it's sort of a breakdown there. I did talk with Chief Beatty today. He couldn't attend tonight because of actually work reasons, but he has an initial number for us. He just needs to run it by his assembly, which they're having a special meeting on this week, and then at that point, he can release it to us. So, he prepared me that I didn't have much to worry about, so I look forward to seeing what this contract extension number looks like.
Sounds okay. Eric?
I just want to reiterate my appreciation for the roads crew because I live on one of the more difficult roads at the ridge, one of the steeper ones, and if it doesn't get gravelled, it can be pretty hairy, but they're on top of it all the time, and I appreciate it. That's all.
Parks and Rec and Cemetery. So, Parks and Rec, I think Tommy's maybe in the back. So, Parks and Rec first, Christina?
Sure. Wanted to defer to Tommy for cemetery, and while he's walking up, just reiterate that we are looking for someone for the summer for the parks position, preferably with a little bit of construction background. And then also with the relation to the Gurwud area plan, a reminder that this week's, this month's meeting is on Tuesday, not Thursday. And again, this is an opportunity for your voice to be heard about what could Gurwud look like in the next 10 to 20 years, so definitely participate. And then, as always, my email remains open, and I always take comments in between meetings and spend a lot of time reviewing those, so don't hesitate to reach out if you've got any interest regarding all the different Parks and Rec subcommittees. Tommy, Cemetery?
My name is Tommy O'Malley. I'm the chairperson of the Gurwud Cemetery Committee, and I'd like to announce that we are going to have a public meeting on February 28th. That's on a Thursday, and it is going to be a presentation of the preliminary design that our cemetery planners have come up with. It will also, it will also under the cost of the cemetery, so please come and learn about the project and bring finger foods? No. Bring, sorry.
Ghoulish delights?
Ghoulish delights, yummy potluck to share with your neighbors. This is not a meeting of whether not to have a cemetery, but to show how far we've come, what the designs are. There is, there will be time to put it in, an area to put in your suggestions for the cemetery. Also, we are going to try and figure out a name for our cemetery. And also, if you look on the city's website and do a little bit of digging, you can come across all of the public process, all the minutes of the meetings, and also the design that's been proposed for the cemetery. It's online. There's been a lengthy public process on this. Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Just to reiterate, I do encourage folks to come to the meeting on the 28th. The amount of work that's gone into the cemetery's meeting is substantive. It has a lot of frequently asked questions that we anticipate hearing from the communities, but also it seems to be kind of a good standard of what a master plan should look like. It's had adequate public comment that has been incorporated, has a beautiful design element that has been responsive to many of the issues that have been brought up in the public forum. It also has a lot of records behind it that demonstrate its sustainable design for the good of the Gurwud community. So, I highly recommend that if you want to see a good master plan in action, come to next Thursday's meeting on the 28th.
Well said.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I would like to report on an event that the cemetery committee put on. It was called the Death Cafe, and it was an exploration of end-of-life matters. And there were five presenters at the line and one person in the audience. We had her outnumbered. What we focused on were medical orders for standard treatments and comfort. That's an acronym, and I'm not sure what it means. Carol Fox talked about the most, that is, medical orders, and that is something that you discuss with your doctor and get written out as far as if you want to be resuscitated, if you want to be fed, if you wanted to be kept alive, that kind of thing, and that's done between the doctor and the person. There was somebody, there were two people from the clinic who say that they are going to be using, I think it was Choice or Comfort, Comfort One, and that is basically the same kind of thing, but it comes with a card that you carry in your wallet. So, if the ambulance comes to pick you up, and it's also connected to a database, I believe. We also had a notary there. Rebecca Reichlin talked about if you want to make your own will, you'll need to have yourself sign it and a witness, an extra witness, for that to be notarized, and that is a totally acceptable way to do a will. Jerry Reichlin was there to give his medical opinion of wills, and the main thing that he said is that you tell everybody where your will is. And that's the really important thing about your end-of-life decisions, is that you let everybody know, and you put it on your refrigerator or something. And I want to report that our one audience member went home and filled it out, so we had an effect. We plan to do another Death Cafe. Maybe we'll come up with a more charming name. Thank you.
Thanks, Tommy.
Okay, next up is fire department for me, and Chief has just left, but I was going to say in her stead that there's obviously an ongoing recruitment effort for the fire department, and if you're interested, just check out the local paper. There's an article in the local paper. And Chief, you got anything?
No, that's it, basically. We have been sort of aggressively campaigning for the fact that we need Gurwud residents to apply for the fire department because we kind of have low staff at the moment. So, we did the KDU news story and also the Glacier City Gazette story. So, as of the standard right now, I have, I would say, seven applications for Anchorage and one for Gurwud. We did have a waffle and coffee, a cushion, breakfast. We had 13 people attend. None of those, or one of those people have put in.
Applications are due when?
Coming up. I don't know, obviously, it's a lot. Oh, there's, you know the date. They're due on the 4th. Yes, they're due on the 4th. We are obviously very busy because the resort being sold out every weekend. We are pretty busy, except we do put an extra 730 people into the community, which is wonderful. We were just at the resort for two pediatric emergency services, and so now we're back. So, anyway, it's been busy, and we're on run number 74. Great.
Thanks. Appreciate your service, all you do for the community and all your members do. And oh, and the other, one other thing I mentioned is there's a board of directors meeting March 14th at 7:00 PM. So, let's open it to the public. Mike, that being here.
I'll just read. He had two things he just emailed to me before the meeting. Title 21, Chapter 9 changes related to parking. Earlier this month, Karen Sakaro and Mike attended a meeting with muni planning staff and the traffic engineer to explain our intent to reduce commercial parking requirements in Gurwud and agree to a, agree to a plan to get the changes through the public process. The muni is currently updating the parking code to increase the number of reductions by right, and we will also make use of those changes. At this month's, at this month's Title 1, Chapter 9 review meeting, we decided to add a Gurwud specific core parking table, parking count table. We anticipate having a specific proposal for land use in GPOS by the April meeting cycle. Switching gears, housing working group. We are working on three main issues. One is encouraging accessory drilling units, ADUs, reducing the cost of new development via grant funding for infrastructure. And number three, encouraging more long-term rental units versus short-term rental units. At February's meeting, we focused on the ADU code, reviewing the Anchorage and Gurwud ADU rules, and drafted a first pass at expanded ADU code. We also anticipate this to reach LUC and GPOS in April. That's it.
Next up, public comment. Person that's offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. It must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. I see Tommy raising his hand.
Tommy O'Malley, Box 598, Gurwud, Alaska. My sweetheart says I say more than my prayers. I want to remind people when they fill out their permanent fund applications to look on the Pick, Click, Give section. There are many organizations here in Gurwud that benefit from the Pick, Click, Give. I'm here for the Gurwud Fine Arts Camp, but the clinic is one. Anybody else? Yeah.
Anchorage Public Library, friends of the library.
Four Valleys Community Schools.
Four Valleys Community Schools. Thank you.
Challenge.
Challenge Alaska.
Challenge Alaska. The Alieska Ski?
I don't know.
I don't know about those. Maybe the Gurwud Center for Visual Arts, but keep in mind, the money goes right here to the town and benefits all of us. Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. Crystal Hope, 1134, and just wanted to provide a quick update for Gurwud Governance Association. We have sent out a notice to the interested parties and also those that participated in our economic study that we're not going to be pursuing anymore in regards to the Prince William Sound Burrow. We feel like we've got enough pushback to show the state plenty of evidence that that's not what the communities want, and so we are continuing to move forward, even though the numbers were really good and very interesting. And what we got back was a calculator that had any number of different variations of how it could be possible. But there was one in particular that we were, we were liking, but the other communities, we're not going to force something on another community if they don't want it, obviously. So, we are just continuing to concentrate our efforts locally on the feasibility study for the city of Gurwud. And please keep an eye on our website, gurwud.us, to keep up to date with how our city of Gurwud study is going and also for future fundraising events. That's it. Any questions? Thank you. Also, thank you for letting me bring my daughter here, and hopefully the cushions weren't too much.
So, I have one public comment. My name is Jerry Fox, Box 1151, Gurwud. Every year, we've been doing free tax prep here in Gurwud. Starting tomorrow at noon, we do another one. We do it, three days during the year. We do one tomorrow, we do one March 19th, and we do one April 6th. The hours are noon to 3:30 for all three days, and we've distributed flyers around town. There's one out there, and just kind of mentioning it on the radio for anybody who wants to use our free tax service. We'll be around tomorrow. We just walk in and we'll work on your taxes. Okay, next up, whole business. Discuss training for GPOS committees, subcommittees.
So, yes, so I talked with the clerk's office. They only do, they only organize one training a year, so what I'm trying to do is organize it as the clerk does for sometime in March, for a date that works with the majority of people, but it also gives a backup for those who can't attend the meeting in March that can tend the Open Meetings Act training in April after the general election has completed for the muni. So, there'll be two chances for those, but we will structure it for GPOS members and then executive officers on land use and Trails Committee to attend, and also the other subcommittees as well. So, we'll try to have at least a representative from each one of those committees present. So, that's where we're at right now. So, I have to get Todd Sherwood, the Mississippi Attorney, and then Dee Ennis, the ethics attorney, and try to get them and everybody together at one time. So, we'll see. You'll be getting an email soon about a toodle pull about when you might be available.
Questions?
Thanks for coordinating that for us. Been herding those cats. I appreciate it.
And next up, Gen Item, LUC 1901-03. Discuss and vote on Gurwud Mountain Bike Alliance Bike Park Master Plan. Conceptual map of new mountain bike trails. Group received non-objective from GTC and LUC for recommendation for GPOS resolution of support. Nick, once again.
I think a lot of people here have seen this presentation once before, but I'll give you a brief history. We've presented this twice now to Trails Committee, twice to Land Use Committee, and this will be the second presentation here at GPOS. We received good public comment during the whole process and have tried to incorporate everything to our best abilities to see the, to produce the current draft that you guys have in your hands right now. Basically, what you're looking at here is a master plan, kind of a full build-out scenario of what we're calling the Gurwud Mountain Bike Park located out using the 5K, existing 5K Nordic Ski Loop and CPG's Cat Road as kind of a backbone infrastructure. Yeah, I would rather, instead of just listening to me talk, if anyone has questions, I think a lot of people are very familiar with this project at this point from all of our presentations. I would just address questions at this point.
Well, we'll start with the board.
I'm going to defer to the public, and then I'll go.
Well, I'll look at the other board members. Do they have any comments?
Not yet.
Public, comments for the public, Brendan?
Should I? Would it be easier if I go on first?
Sure.
I actually had a bit of testimony. It's more towards GPOS because I've been to all of the meetings about this, but obviously, you know, Nick can respond to the concerns and everything as well. But I won't touch the, Brendan Ramdikovian, Box 924, Gurwud. So, I first wanted to say that I support mountain bike trail opportunities near the community. It's a clearly defined user group that has a need near the community like other user groups, and I think we can meet that need as a community. I don't think the proposal itself is necessarily a bad one, but I do think that there are some problems with it that despite being brought up at multiple meetings, still haven't been worked out. There's kind of a sort of, at multiple meetings, sort of a come to the next meeting and the next one and see if it gets worked out, and I feel like now that we're at the last GPOS stop for this, that it's incumbent upon GPOS to make some amendments to the proposal in terms of stewardship of our community's lands to ensure local autonomy and to ensure that established public process gets preserved. To be specific, and also I should mention that having been to all of the meetings and also sent detailed information as requested to the Alliance by email, that I think that my impression is that these two things which I want to ask of you are probably the most common, but community concerns which haven't been incorporated. So, I would ask you actually to make two amendments to this proposal. First, I'm asking that you remove Zone C and the Blue Trail from the current proposal, and that's the, this is Zone C, and this is the Blue Trail. Removed for now and proposed back to Gurwud Bodies as a separate proposal after the Alliance has completed the other work outlined in the map, the red trails. You'll see within the 5K, Zones A and Zones B. I think this could be done in a number of ways, either by simply deleting them or approving the whole plan in concept, but leaving approvals for particular trails blank for Zone C and the Blue Trail. And note, they can be considered through a separate full process after the other trails are built. I think there are a lot of good reasons for this. The red trails in Zones A and B are already The red trails in Zones A and B are already within the impacted area of the 5K. As the Zone C and blue trail, however, are larger areas and outside of that, it would make sense to start with those other areas and see how things progress before we move to currently un-impacted areas. And along with that, the alliance has about a little over, let's say, one and a half trails' worth of experience. I don't think it would be appropriate to just hand over sort of the whole area without sort of seeing a good, nice track record that we can go, okay, you know, we like this, we don't like this. Approving the red trails in Zones A and B by my count would allow something around 10 trails and years of trails building. So I think that's a good start. And I don't think it would raise any real concerns about potential UDC fees at most. I think the alliance would have to pay the fee twice. And if you consider that these are lots of trails, many years, tens of thousands of dollars, I don't think that's a huge burden once now and once for a separate proposal later. And my second recommended amendment that I'm asking you to make as supervisors is that I'm asking you to write back into this plan, Girdwood voting power on individual trails as the work progresses on the park. The alliance's proposal currently writes this voting power out for individual trails. It only says the Trails Committee will be reported to on an annual basis. I think reporting is good, but it's not enough. Removing our voting power is a removal of local autonomy, and I don't think it would be responsible stewardship. I don't think we would be taking a step forward to learn from past mistakes to strip back oversight powers now. It's not about trust, it's about process, it's about being prudent. And this isn't our normal process to not have individual oversight of trails when you have TMOs and alignments. So I think that would be a good thing for you to add back. Thank you. I can sit if you want to ask a question.
Yeah. I'll kind of, I'll kind of make a comment to that. You know, I mentioned this to Land Use. You know, if the Mountain Bike Alliance comes in and they make a few trails, this plan is a generalized area plan for biking. It's not anything that is going to happen this year, next year, or the year after that. I mean, to worry about Zone, what is it, C, that's many years on. And there's a lot of public process they have to go through besides us. You know, they've got to go through planning Zone UDC, they got to, it's Heritage Land Bank land. And so, you know, I talked, I was at the Heritage Land Bank meeting on Thursday, and I talked to Robin after the meeting and asked, well, if this plan is approved, does that mean they just get to make trails every year? And she says, we don't, this plan doesn't mean much to us. We want them to have a master plan, but we approve easements for trails as they are going to develop. So every time they're going to develop a trail, they have to come before us and get the easement. So to worry about, you know, I'm thinking this is more, like Zone C is more generalized. Am I missing something here? And so to act like we are promoting this trail in Zone C, that it's got to be there, I don't think that's really the case. The other thing, you know, if they, if the Mountain Bike Alliance comes in and they bring a bulldozer in there and they make a trail 30 feet wide, you know this community's going to stop them. You know there's a way we can stop them, and we will. And that's one of the great things about this community is we have such a robust public process that when they make a mistake, if they do, you know, we'll be there. And this isn't, it isn't like this is set in stone. So I support the resolution support that came up through the Land Use Committee and the Trails Committee. And I support them making trails. I mean, I personally don't want to make it harder for these people than it already is. And they're volunteers, they're volunteering their time in this community, and they're raising money, and we shouldn't make it any harder than we already have. And we shouldn't make it harder than, you know, they've got to go through UDC planning. We don't even know what the UDC process is. And then there's some other, what's the other one now? The, anyways, there's another process you have to go through. Anyways, I'm supportive of the plan. I mean, I'm on the trails a lot, cross-country skiing, and I see a lot of community members, but I also see a lot of people from Anchorage on the trails, cross-country skiing, and it just brings a lot of economic value to our community. So I'm supportive of this. Okay, Marco?
So I have a couple of comments. We've been through the UDC process a couple of times, and they don't like to see piecemeal things. If you're looking at an entire area, they might be concerned. And that would be the first question, is do you have any other objectives in your plan? And you say, oh, yeah, or a thing about this other area in the future, they want you to present it. And the second part is, in the Girdwood Land Use Regulations, the area map, there's two parts to a master plan. There's the area master plan and the development master plan. So it might not be entirely applicable to this project, but the Girdwood Land Use Regulations invite you to present a generalized area master plan where not all the pieces are specifically laid out, with the intent that as you, as you develop your first pieces, your needs, wants, desires, experiences, changes as you move forward in the future. And then you look at the individual pieces within your area master plan, you do a development master plan, which then lays out the specifics for the pieces. Now, again, this isn't entirely applicable to this because this is a building, a parking license, roads. But there is a, the Girdwood Land Use Regulations support the big areas.
But yeah, that's kind of, my question is, why doesn't this fall under the Girdwood area plan? And if it's going to take multiple years, maybe we should put it under the Girdwood area plan. And you specifically mentioned public process. I just found out about this the other day. I've used this area, and I've lived here for 20 years. And I thought, I'll blame myself for not going to all the meetings. But I took the map that I got a hold of, and I showed it to a lot of my friends, and nobody, all of whom have lived here for almost as long as I have, and they didn't know about it. So I don't think it's incumbent upon the residents to go to these meetings where you have a vote at a land use committee that's 15 or 20 or whatever it was, to one or two, that it's incumbent upon, we're very busy, I'm trying as hard as I can to find out everything that's happening here. Obviously, there's been a lot here tonight itself, but this is a major use of land. And I don't, I don't think we should steamroll this thing through and give this cart launch. I'm all for biking. I've been biking all my life as well. I don't want to be labeled as an anti-biker or anything like that. But I just think that we should take a step and look at the process for the, for this master plan. This has gone, this went through a different way. They got a lot of people, they put signs up all over the community, and they didn't just try to slide it through a couple of committees and then bring it, this big idea into, through committees. I think it's incumbent upon this group to go out and do their homework and actually go out and tell people this, what we're thinking, what do you think? Maybe some people say yes, maybe some people say no, but we can get a better sense, and they can draw the support of the community rather than just kind of slip it through this process. And this is what creates these problems that you mentioned, where we do have bulldozers starting out there, then people start freaking out, hey, there's a bulldozer, you know, what's, what is this? And then you say, well, it went through all these plannings, well, I wasn't involved. And I think that it's incumbent upon us in this small community to really work to try to involve people. And like the Girdwood area plan did, where they tried to survey, they're surveying people, they're asking us, what do you think? And I think this represents a very significant, this is space that a lot of people use as primitive trail right now, and they really enjoy it for that. There's places where they can go, and they can take their dog. What happens when you have trails and you can no longer take your dog there? What happens when you're trying to run a dog or something, and a bike comes around the corner? There's an inevitable user conflict. This is stuff that we should really start talking about now before we approve this plant cart launch. Who knows how many trails could go in there? Do you know? I mean, is there a number? I mean, is there amount of development? Have all these things been discussed?
Well, imagine, there has been, through the process, there has been, you know, two meetings at Trails, two meetings at Land Use. This is our second meeting here on this process, so total of six meetings in the community involved. So it isn't like it hasn't been discussed. They haven't put flyers all over town, and I would agree with that, but, you know, I don't know what else you would do, and I don't really want to get into discussion of democracy and how we set up our systems here, but, you know, I don't know how else we decide things in this community if we don't do it through a process. And we have a process that we follow. And it goes through these, and the people that come to meetings, you know, lots of times, they get their ideas pushed through because they come to the meetings.
All I'm saying is that a special interest group that comes should really try to get the sense of the community and the support of the community before they go through this process. Because it is very easy for a special interest group to come with an agenda and bring it through meetings if they can get enough people to show up to meetings. I was formally informed by supervisors on how the system works.
Okay.
Jerry, two comments that I wanted to quickly make. One is to address the, what people have said, that there's been through like two meetings at the GTC and two at Land Use. Reason why I've been to two meetings is because the first time it came, it was pushed back at the GTC because it was an inadequate plan. So the Mountain Bike Alliance went back, and several months later, came back and actually threw a meeting. So I wanted to say that, it's not like, I mean, I think it's great that they, this group keeps coming back and diligently working on it, but I think it's a little bit this because, you know, maybe like, just like an assumption like, well, they've been out here and talking about it for so long, and we've been to all these meetings. Well, it's because it hasn't been right, and there's been opposition to it. So I just wanted to say that. And I don't know what the point really is yet, so I just wanted to say it just so. The other thing is, that's like trying to be, it was possible, question to be traded is that when you said that, well, the community, I mean, nobody else, but, I mean, I really believe in community's sense of pride and joyfulness and fun, and I feel that way, and I love that. That's one answer that I really, really believe in after that. However, I wonder if what you personally, if you make a comment, what do you think has changed in Girdwood that in the last 10 years, that if there's a trail being built, a bulldozer that's going out to 30 feet, that the community will be able to stop that? What makes you think that that has changed?
Well, the first thing that's changed is our relationship with HLB. Our relationship with HLB is way better than it ever was 10 years ago, seven years ago. Our relationship with HLB, HLB is the one who owns the land, and we are able to communicate to them, and I communicated to their board on Thursday that I expect them to follow, to follow the public process of Girdwood, and if they don't, they're going to have a political problem. And so we have a lot better input with the HLB than we ever have, and it's their property. And so that's one of the biggest things that has changed over the last few years. And we have a really good relationship with the municipal staff we have now, the mayor and the municipal manager and stuff. So if, you know, we have problems here, I know politically how to go and make things happen, and I can make them happen.
Well, I feel that, you know, that maybe...
And our community, I shouldn't say I, that's the wrong way to do it. Our community can make them happen.
Okay, I appreciate your optimism, this on the HLB aspect of changing. I think that 10 years ago, HLB had tremendous, I think it was the same as it is now. Actually, we had Representative Girdwood in on there that sort of acted and brought things through. I don't want to try to argue with you about that, but just personally don't see a change with that. I think that actually, anything, you know, that they have made a grave mistake by not being, by first, that seemed that they are law, because they own the same land, that something was desecrated of. And they're still, I mean, the investigation is like where it is right now, and so, you know, that's not really good to giving them a great pat on the back. It's something that I wouldn't say in front of them, even though on top of kind of that. So I, I mean, I appreciate that you have confidence in it, I just was curious that, that why you make it like and say it like that. Because I don't think this community, we have the, have that, not only the authority or just even the want, or the, just how to do that. And I think that's what Brendan was trying to say specifically, where he wanted that voting power, that he wanted the board supervisors to announce the voting power back. And that's one of the amendments that I am giving, that's what he is really striving for. And I wanted to make that clear, that I think that's what he's doing. And I agree with that, I think that's important. Okay, I have another one to comment here.
Kyle?
So, you know, I've heard a lot of the concerns through the community on diverse sides about this, and so I went to both Planning Department and HLB last week to ask what will happen. Planning Department could only give me more of a conceptual idea because they haven't presented this plan yet, they haven't had a pre-conference about this, but they understand what's going on. And they've been listening to the feedback that's been coming back, and then also with HLB, and I think the same discussion you may have had with HLB. And what I got was that, and, you know, this is all conceptual, there's nothing written in stone, but what I got from them was that they would most likely would like to see each year a plan approved, a work plan approved through Trails, Land Use, and GBOS that would say, this is what the Trail Alliance or the Mountain Bike Alliance is going to do, and as a community, we support this in it. And so, like, which would give parameters to HLB to say, okay, the community's come behind you on this, they like what you're doing, and they're, they've given you the A-OK to build the two red trails in this section, something like that. So, so that each time the trail moves forward, or the development moves forward, the community's behind those steps on a basis, similar to what we do, I guess we're trying to do now with Trails Committee in the sense of going to Trails Committee and getting their support for trail work that happens out there. So I would probably guess that they're going to, when this starts to go through the Planning Department, they're going to talk with the Mountain Bike Alliance about this and incorporating that into their plan for future development so that as things go, so like, if we ever get to Zone C, and then they finally come and say, we want to build four trails in there, they would have to go through the community process to garner the support to put those four trails in there. But what this right now gives them is an understanding as to what the community is supportive of the concept, but not the individual trails until they see that work plan each year. So that's the feedback I got from, from that aspect.
I'll let her go before I go.
Julie?
Yeah, so I actually just wanted to support a lot of the comments that I've heard so far and say that, you know, in theory, I don't think these trails are a bad idea. I just think that there are some issues that are still remaining to be addressed, like a couple of people have brought up here. And the two suggested amendments by Brendan, you know, those aren't in opposition to these trails, they're, those amendments are in favor of good public process, and they're in favor of, you know, responsible stewardship of public lands. And, you know, what Kyle just said, also in those conversations with HLB, which is also my understanding, is that they do want to see these individual plans approved or gone through the Girdwood process, and so that makes sense to add that power back in. And, you know, your comments at HLB the other day, Gary, about you want HLB to follow our process. Well, we have a process at Trails, and the process is individual trail approvals. And that didn't happen in this case. So that's where this concern about keeping power here in Girdwood is coming up. It's not to mix this master plan or this idea in general, it's to keep the power, voting power in Girdwood for individual, individual trails. So, yeah, I just wanted to say that, and I also just wanted to say that I'm a little bit surprised to hear anybody on the supervisor, Board of Supervisors say, well, you know, a bulldozer comes, the community will take care of it. Like, that's just, what is the Board of Supervisors then about the 5K? When did the Board of Supervisors ever step up and say, it looks like maybe you guys are teaming or through, you know, we push the pause button and have a conversation? Not that it never happened to any of them, so. And again, I don't think this should be a matter of us, I think it should just be a matter of clear expectations and understandings. a matter of us, I think it should just be a matter of clear expectations and understandings, and, um, that we should all be making this decision for ourselves. I support the two amendments, and I hope that you guys-
I'd like to say that, um, the Trails Committee has never had a, a master plan before before, it's always been a trail. So this was new, and, um, I think that they followed the group, followed the process that we had outlined as best as we had done it, was something that was new to us, and we had revised it, and they followed it, they did what they were expected to do. So, um, what I would be in support of is having the master plan in place, but having them come back to us, to us meaning Trails Committee, Land Use, GBOS, each year to tell us not only just what they're going to do, but having us look at it and approve it. And it could be two trails, it could be three trails, it could be four trails, but it needs to be approved on a regular basis.
Doug?
I can speak a little bit to that too, and what I want to talk about is, so let's see, which we talked about at the last, uh, maybe, uh, Nick and I, in front of the group. I think that, I do, maybe putting a little bit of information in front of you guys could be helpful for me to clarify what my thoughts were, and I read the changes that you made in the plan, which, uh, led to basically the process of development. And I just wrote up a little proposal for you guys to consider, um, regarding the development plan through Zone C. And my belief is that, it's great we have a good relationship with the Board of, of the Heritage Land Bank right now. We have a good line of communication between the Mountain Bike Alliance and us as a community, and these are great things. This is a 10-year project, we don't really know what things are going to be like with HLB in five years, we don't really know, we don't really know how the trail system's going to look in five years compared to the conceptual design, and I think that having a backdrop where the Zone C is actually separated out as a reserve and brought forth as a discussion item in front of the Board of Supervisors and Trails Committee, once the rest of it's all developed out, makes a lot of sense for the protection of the community. The processes that are in place for trail building oversight, great, those are awesome. But after a few years, and the red trails have developed, and the green trails have developed, and everything's been in use for a while, the community will have a great picture for how it's all working, and also what the demand is, and also what the funding levels tend to be, uh, for the Alliance, whether they, you know, is it enough, or is there a big push for more space, and is there the money to really make that happen? And so, to, I would propose to discuss the possibility of setting aside Zone C as a reserve to go through the full process again, at the point in time, if you're down the road where we're ready to move that way. Thank you.
Nick Pur, I'll grab Christina.
Would you like to respond to anything before I go?
No one's asked me a question, so.
Yeah, yeah, they come, public comments, for sure. Okay, in summary, I've spent seven-ish hours in the past month going through the Mountain Bike Alliance trails, going to the community-
Were you waiting for the involved?
I was. No time like the present, go ahead.
Okay. Jonathan Lee, Kielbox, 1385. Um, I'd like to speak in favor of the map of about two-thirds or three-quarters of this plan. I'm really happy to see it. It not only serves the mountain biking community, it might get some of the mountain bikes off the Winter Creek Trail. It's too crowded to have people mountain biking, and better than outlawing it is to give them somewhere better to go. So, that's great. That's my, uh, sales pitch for two-thirds of this plan. Zone C really should be separate. It's entirely different from the rest of it. My other sales pitch for the first two-thirds of this plan is, it's, um, it's in an area that's already highly impacted. This is a developed area. They're not plowing down untouched wild nature. They, um, came up with a plan to make use of an area that already has the 5K loop, and they're adding more in there, um, and that's fantastic, they're not tearing up an untouched area. Zone C is an untouched area. That's one more reason to consider it separately. I didn't know someone was actually going to put that amendment in writing. I'd like to speak in favor of his amendment. It's generally considered to be probably further down the road, way down the road. There's nothing in writing that says that, and there's nothing in writing that says anyone has to review it before that. I was relieved to hear what Kyle was just saying, the link, the other, who was it, you said, proven design?
Planning Department.
Planning Department would like to see annual reviews. They prove a master plan, then they want to look at every, there's no reason we can't do that to put it in writing. The Muni can review it, the community should be able to, to look at everything they do the first year, and hopefully Trails Committee is meeting in a year and saying, yeah, it looks good, go forward with the next two months. Hopefully so. And if not, if it doesn't go well, if there's some of the problems we had with the 5K, then we have it in writing that we do get to review, and we do get to approve or deny permission. It should be in writing, there should be a review. Thank you.
Oh, okay, well, I just made my point earlier, is that, um, I have to say that, um, I definitely agree with what the, um, the Charlemagne, um, and then said, and I definitely agree with the, that Doug had said, um, we actually talked at length about it after the last meeting, the Trails Committee, we talked quite a bit about it, and post-con, and really what does this mean, and, um, yeah, I'm all for, um, if you guys, the Bike Alliance wants to go in that area, and they are method, whatever nerves, and all, everything that the UDC and the HLB, which I think is kind of interesting, and I'm a little confused about this, like, conception, this, um, plan that you said that you had with them before, still kind of a little bit of a man, but I don't know, and I don't want to be, or know all of that specifics. You know HLB has a five-year plan right now, that's specifically, we discussed this some weeks, as we're talking about, and I don't think that the, this user group has really been, I don't see how that has met that yet, because we don't have the plan yet. So, this is something that's sacred ours, at least we're like, trying to like, well, we don't have that actual plan yet, so if we're saying this, and we're putting this in a document. So I do really agree with that, and I think that it is really important to stage it out. I, for just the numerous reasons that I think are pretty obvious, I just, I don't think I need to reiterate that. I feel that, um, I didn't have a chance, Nick, to look at the comments that were made last month that you were going to incorporate into this plan, so I think that that's also, and I don't want that to be hung up, but, you know, to, for me to look at it right here, I think that, um, I was wondering, like, did you, like, will this be, will the safety concern, for example? I saw that you addressed that, um, I mean, is this the way that, number eight, eight? Did you really get that? Is that a big discussion last, um-
I believe there's a section on, there's a section on safety.
They would come out?
Yeah, I added a section on safety in there.
Is that a part of the meeting?
I'm not sure, I think it's towards the end.
And right here? And I don't want to make either of these documents, either, but I think these were like issues that fly on the UDC's, and we talked about it, you wanted, you were open to those, you wanted to talk about it.
Uh, on this package, I got maybe 12 safety and signage?
Yes. Well, there was one particular issue that we talked about, that I just missed.
You can, while she's reading that section, I guess what I should do is address the two major issues that everybody's talking about and reiterating. Gerwood Mountain Bike Alliance has no issues coming back to trails, land use, and GBOS, if that's what those, the local community wants, and that's the way that GBOS wants to vote this in. The reason we had it differently in our plan was kind of the way we were getting directed and what we thought was going to be the process. This is the public process, right? If this is what Gerwood wants, then this is what the process will become, and we're fine with that, no problem. As far as Zone C and a master plan, I, it's hard for us to take Zone C out, kind of similar to what was described about what a master plan really is, is, a master plan is the plan of what you see as the overall of the park. If we see Zone C as being part of this park in the future, I believe it should be incorporated into the current master plan. If the local entities have, you know, say, as we have these annual work plans, which, you know, the annual work plans are spelled out and how we're going to do that, um, then you have the ability to review trails in Zone C, and the Blue Trail, and whatever other trails that are on this map. Again, we got to realize this is not a work plan, it's a master plan, and this is what the UDC and HLB wanted to see prior to us having, they didn't want to see specific trails getting introduced and approved, they wanted to see the overall vision of the park, and that's what this is. So I guess those are the two major comments that I've seen, I, like, again, I think Zone C should be part of the plan because it is part of the overall idea. As far as the local input, I'm up for whatever this board votes, as far as what they want to see as the local input for these trails moving forward.
And I expected that, you know, next year, when you, if you're going to be, you're going to build new trails next year, you would be coming back. I mean, that's just the next, that's it. So, Christina, we've got to keep moving.
Okay.
We can't.
All right, fine. The, so, as I was stating, I've spent over seven hours on this, particularly, I spent three hours providing comments to the Gerwood Mountain Bike Alliance on the bike park master plan, and many of them were incorporated, and I appreciate, the ones that you didn't incorporate, I'll call you that. But for that matter, there's also been a lot of conversation on who's on first and where does the public weigh in on this. And HLB has specifically said that, um, they're going to be setting up a cooperative use agreement with the Gerwood Mountain Bike Alliance. That cooperative use agreement is a lesson learned from the Forest Loop Trail, so that we don't have a bulldozer and a 35-plus-foot right-of-way clearance. But Nicole said last week that the cooperative use agreement terms and conditions are still ways away from having a good sense of what that's going to look like. Their, HLB will be hosting a joint meeting with the Trails Committee in March to discuss what those terms should be. Again, that would, that cooperative use agreement provides governance for how HLB as a landowner works with the Gerwood Mountain Bike Alliance at the Basie about the trail construction, some of the specifications, sustainability matters, best management practices that would be incorporated. Further, Michelle McNulty at the, um, UDC specifically said that they could approve a plan in this con, in this conceptual manner, um, on the condition that prior to trail construction, that the development plan for a specific trail be brought to the advisory boards for review. In order to clear the advisory board, they would need to have, um, a plan for construction, a 35% design of the trail, typical cross-sections, and the phasing for the plant development. So there are, as a 501(c)(3), there are additional hurdles that this group will be going through at the municipality level, at the landowner level, at the Gerwood Trails level, and then further here at the Gerwood Board of Supervisors. The master plan is in concept, I do agree personally, not as a Gerwood Board of Supervisor, but as a resident of Gerwood, that Zone C would be best if left out further. Let's give them five years to do fundraising, ensuring that the funds are used for maintenance, which is the priority for each year's work plan, versus the construction, um, for new trails that would be reviewed each year. The resolution that's before us tonight, um, it basically summarizes the past six, seven meetings that the Gerwood Mountain Bike Alliance has gone through. It has no teeth, all it does is, is pretty much a letter of non-objection saying, yep, they've gone through it, we recognize it, it's a living document, and we support it because the community is supportive of a Gerwood bike park for the reasons that have been stated in other meetings, as well as here tonight, reiterated. Get additional people off of, uh, multi-use trails and, and put them in designated areas where they wouldn't have so many conflict user agreements, et cetera. So, we, we're not voting on any process tonight with this resolution. We also haven't quite figured out what the process is. Like we said, this is the first time a master plan has come before a, a very active committee that otherwise has only done it on a trail-by-trail basis to date. So, we've got some growing pains in here, and I think the public has been very good at providing very concise, uh, comments that have been incorporated. Is this master plan fabulous? No, I permit for a living, this is not a good master plan. This master plan has a long way to go, but for the first couple of months, and for being responsive to, hey, you need to come back with a narrative for this mass, for the map that you gave us, not a bad first cut. Um, there's always room for improvement, though. So, I would say that Mike and I discussed this previously, he's out sick tonight, from the Land Use perspective, he and I wanted to work on this resolution together and provide joint language. We have not had the opportunity to do that. Next month would be a perfectly fine month to vote for this resolution, having heard that Heritage Land Bank at the meeting with the Gerwood Trails Committee in the 14th, this resolution, since it has no teeth and is not really supporting anything, doesn't impact his timeline or the organization's timeline for their continued meetings with HLB for the cooperative use agreement, it doesn't impact any of the things with the UDC, because they haven't even had a pre-application meeting with that entity. This could sit for another month, especially given the fact that the communities had an opportunity to express themselves tonight, and we now have some additional traction from some new people. I move to table the resolution until next month, allowing me and the Land Use Supervisor to work on language that reflects those other meetings.
I'd be open to table, yeah, now, can I say something?
Yeah, you're up.
Well, hold on, procedure, there's a motion, so we need a second, for the discussion.
Okay, for the discussion.
Um, just hearing what we have heard tonight, um, I, I would feel more comfortable, I mean, as a master plan, I think it makes sense to show all zones that you're planning on developing, um, but something that we might consider putting into the resolution is that, um, like Zones A and B are built out first, and then Zone C is considered at a later time. It can, I think it's a stay in the master plan, but, um, they're going to be coming to us with each trail anyway.
That's already stated in the master plan, is A and B are first, and the construction phasing.
But it's, I mean, we could formalize it in the resolution.
Sure, yes.
So those are my thoughts, I, I'm glad more people came and commented tonight, the more, the more community input, the better, it sounds like.
I just had one question, especially since Trail C seems to be the most contentious. That trail more or less paralyzed the cat track trail that's existing, are you intending to overlap those trails or side by side them?
We've been intending to use the existing clearing to, so they'll have less input on the, on the forest, and not have an additional clearing next to a trail.
I was hoping for that answer.
Yeah.
For those who are concerned about impacting areas that are not already impacted, should we be, we're just overlapping an existing trail.
Yeah.
That means that I do think that if it is a master plan, it seems proven to me to include all intended trails. Um, I, I like the idea of the amendment, to say that this can be backburnered after initial projects are finished, but I think, I think it seems to me to make sense to put everything you have on the table in, in the master plan.
At the Gerwood Trails Committee, it was articulated, that's not possible right now, except just in further concept, because based on the topography and user, and ridership as they construct the trails, um, putting a little squiggle line in either Zone A or Zone B, it might need to move based on terrain features, lessons learned from previous trail, best management practices, et cetera. So, it, it wasn't put in for particular reasons that I under, that I personally understood. Did I capture that correctly? Did I capture that correctly about why those weren't in there?
So I'll make my comment, and then if we do any more comments, we can call for a vote. And I'll ask Kyle about this. You know, one of the things, I was talking about public process. Public process, you know, we've had the Trails Committee support this and the Land Use Committee support this. And if we don't have the same support, does this now have to go back to Land Use?
If you... Sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, if you...
If we don't support...
The motion that came up from Land Use was a write-off resolution of support for...
But if we don't want a resolution of support tonight, then we...
No.
Our rules...
You're tabling. If you... The motion that's in front of you is to table the resolution for now until next month. If you decide not to support this master plan at next month's meeting, then procedure calls for you to meet with Land Use Committee and discuss your differences and hopefully find a conclusion that both support. If Land Use and GBOS cannot come to a compromise, then each opinion needs to be sent to the next body that this goes to.
Yeah.
And I don't think that in the revision that Mike and I would collaborate on next month wouldn't meet the needs of the... that have been expressed tonight as well as the remarks heard by the public. I think it's something that the community has demonstrated support for, just need to fine-tune it a little bit.
I'm looking at Nick. You know, I made the original comment. These people, there's a lot of hard work and volunteerism. I don't want to make it any harder than it already is. But if we wait a month, is it going to matter that much?
I don't think it will matter that much. We won't continue on with the anchorage process. We know we can. We know we can go to... We could have gone to HLB and UDC before we came to any of these entities. That's been done in the past, and it hasn't been looked on very nicely by, you know, people haven't appreciated that. We wanted to complete the Gerwood process, get all the public comment we can get from Gerwood, and then move on to the anchorage process. So if you guys feel like you need another month to look this over, that's your decision, not mine.
And respectfully, because of the Gerwood process being so intrinsically linked with the anchorage process, with them being the landowner, as well as the additional hurdle, especially that $4,000 application fee that you've got to go through, I want to make sure that the Gerwood comments are fully incorporated with those two lenses in mind, so hearing back from HLB. But your organization runs as it needs to be. If you choose to meet with those entities in the next month, it might be prudent to share notes from those so that as we prepare for the meeting with HLB in March, that maybe as a community, we can be more focused in our comments rather than consistently bringing up worries, maybe further address specifics within the cooperative use agreement to make sure it's got the lessons learned incorporated from the Forest Loop Trail, that kind of stuff.
I agree.
Once solicited advice, as it may be.
Yeah, I totally agree. I believe this, whatever public comment between now and this next month that gets incorporated, there's going to be much more that's incorporated once we go through the next processes, which are also available for public comment. It's hard for us to put language in the cooperative use agreement because we don't have one yet, and we haven't formulated that with HLB. And it's hard for us to address some of the issues with UDC because, again, they haven't really expressed to us, and we haven't met with them yet on what those requirements are going to be. If this entity wants us to go through those processes first and come back, it's... we thought we were doing what we saw the community would want us to do, is to come to Gerwood and get the public comment first, and then we can move on. When all this gets said and done, the last entity will be the HLB Advisory Commission, and that is open for public comment, the same forum as this meeting is, it just is an anchorage.
Kyle.
So I think there's some confusion with the proper use agreement. So the proper use agreement, it's a large name. It's a lease. And so basically, the lease has terms within it that spell out as HLB is leasing this land to the Gerwood Mountain Bike Alliance to build their trails. And basically, it's really going to be what flushes out through this whole process. So what comes out of Gerwood is one step. When it goes to Planning, Planning Department has their input. One thing I know Planning has a big issue about is parking, and so that will be something that comes out. But in the end, it's really going to be about what happens on the land, and so it holds... it basically holds a contract with Gerwood Mountain Bike Alliance to perform to these standards. And I think Gerwood Mountain Bike Alliance is already experiencing this in the sense of the trail that they built last summer, and they've been... they've got it built, and they just need the survey to be completed on it. They basically had inspections several times coming through. They had a group of people who came out and looked at it, and basically, it developed the trail that they want. Out of that will be this, a written document that says you have to maintain this, you have to do this, you have to do that to make sure this trail stays in line. So those proper use agreements will not be developed until the end. They'll be basically the result of what's flushed out.
I just wanted to piggyback on what you said on that. I think that would be able to just follow, just like earlier. I would just say also that it's not to be so nifty, but the language here, the piece of perception that's given out is not really correct. The language here, the group received non-objection from GGC, well, that's actually not correct. They got... they received a non-objection with conditions. And that's a big difference. And that's not human cooperation. So that's why I think you have to...
Thanks. Can I move for a vote? No, you can't. Only I can move for a vote. I keep my power. So I'll have a vote. All in favor of tabling the motion for a month? Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll move on. And I would hope that we can resolve this one more meeting. Number 10, review land use permit. HLB permit, 2009, 2013, primed at GBOS for one year, expiring the end of the year. This is just kind of a... Can we vote on it?
Yeah. It doesn't really... It actually doesn't require a vote. I just wanted to bring it to your attention quickly. We did two things this year. We changed... We've taken GBOS off this land use agreement, and we put the municipality anchorage as the leaseholder because it really is a lot that's held for the GBOS. And we're in the second year of paying on this, and we didn't used to pay on these lots. And I tried to get a reduction in it just because of the encroachment that our lot has now with the new development, and they wouldn't reduce because they said our square footage is based on the old plat, which showed this encroachment. So there's a little bit of... I feel like we're kind of in a tough situation with this lot just because of the development of the road, but we're trying to work through it, and Robin's being cooperative to help us figure out what we can do to make it better there for us. So if you haven't been down there, I would suggest coming down. I can give you a field trip of the lot and give you understanding of where we work out of and how much has changed in the last year with the road development down there.
So if you go down, you go around the turnaround, you're on the left.
We're on the left. We're down there. You'll see our stockpiles of material.
Did you say it isn't GBOS's name or...
We're taking it out of GBOS's name? It made no sense for the lease to be with the Gerwood Board of Supervisors because you're an advisory board, and you're... it's really a thing that's set up for the municipality to have a maintenance yard and provide service. So it should be with the municipality of Anchorage. They're the ones who are operating it every day.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve... Do we add anything after the motion?
Nope, it's just information purposes.
Okay. I'm going to go forward then on the next agenda item. Discuss Proposal 101(c)(6) and 101(c)(121) presented at the Board of Game, Proposal Regarding Bearbaiting and Hunting in 14(c). And Mike Edgerton was going to talk about this. I saw a portion of it at the Land Use. The only thing I was concerned was the distance from a trail. I know a distance from the house is a mile, but the distance from the trail was... Do you remember?
It was, I think it was three quarters of a mile.
I thought it was a half a mile.
Or one quarter of a mile.
Quarter of a mile.
Quarter of a mile from a trail.
So that concerned me. A quarter of a mile is not very far to have a bear baiting station, and, you know, people with dogs and going out on the Beaver Pond Trail, that Beaver Pond Trail, and there's a lot of bears out there.
So I'll just state what Mike wrote, and he sent about it. His main concern is that it will allow bear baiting on state and federal lands within the Gerwood Valley, because within municipality lands, bear baiting is not allowed. But within federal and state lands, excluding Chugash State Park in the Upper Valley, this would include some locations near Winter Creek Trail and immediately adjacent to the CPD Trail, since it's not publicly maintained.
Just to clarify, that excludes Winter Creek Trail?
This would include some areas near Winter Creek Trail.
Upper...
No, no, no. State and federal lands within GB... within the Gerwood Valley, excluding Chugash State Park?
State Park. So this...
Excluding.
The bear baiting would be... would... Let me read again.
Yeah.
This... My main concern is I have is that it would allow, would allow bear baiting on state and federal lands within Gerwood Valley, excluding Chugash State Park. So State Park, you couldn't do the bear baiting on it in the Upper Valley. This would include some locations near Winter Creek Trail and immediately adjacent to the CPD Trail, since it's not publicly maintained.
And this is a proposal. This is not something that's...
It's a proposal. It's put forward by a private organization, and, you know, their primary area that they're trying to get to is 20 Mile Valley and those areas. They're not so much worried about Gerwood, but it does open up the door for it to happen.
Do you know what the timing is for approving this?
Yes, it's a comment by... a new march four. So I can search. Can I talk?
Yeah, go ahead, Kelly. Thank you.
Come up to the microphone. It's hard to hear you.
After I was at Land Use, I went onto the Board of Game to see what it was all about because I was confused because that guy who got up and talked, he just kind of started talking, and I wasn't really sure, you know, what we were supposed to do or why he was here or exactly, you know, because... Anyway, so, yeah, you can... The Board of Game meets every two years for the different sections. Our section is this year. He came, and they... that group, the Alaska Hunters...
Resident Hunters of Alaska.
Resident Hunters of Alaska put forward those two proposals to Board of Game. I looked up the proposals. All it says is we propose, you know, because it's allowed in Unit 7, and so it should be allowed in Unit 14(c). And so, yeah, and so then you are able to write in comments, and there's a button you click on, and you just need to write in your comment on that proposal by March 4th. That's all I know.
Thank you.
So the reason this is in front of you is that we received inquiry from ADN, wanted to know what the Gerwood residents thought about these two proposals, and we said, well, we don't know anything about them, so we're going to take them to Land Use and GBOS and allow for people to either make a motion to comment on these, which we did not get out about LUC, or just get the information out to the public so they can make comment on these as well.
I... So should we somewhat craft a motion on the fly here to distribute this information via certain medium in order to elicit public comment? We don't have the timeframe by which we could provide a resolution of objection or whatever, so...
I mean, it is all business, so we can...
Make a motion.
We can make a motion tonight if we... I don't know how we can do it knowing more specifics, I guess.
Well, recognizing that the staff doesn't like this, to craft motions on the fly.
Well, resolution... We don't want to write a resolution on the fly. It never seems to work out, but you can always... Motion can always be made at each meeting.
This seems to me like it's a really awesome grassroots issue. I think that it's something that everybody in this room should take out among the people that you know and see what people think, and encourage individuals to make comment. I think that volume of comments on things like this are a lot more effective than a comment from Board of Supervisors. So, you know, that being said, is it something that we can disseminate out? I think that's not ideal. We can certainly put something out if you tell us to do that, but I think it is more genuine if it comes from within.
Mark, would it be possible to have... I mean, I think it should be both because it would be nice to have something that was like at the post office with a link on it, to know where to track the books after the vote.
We can figure out something like that. I'm not sure that as...
I didn't understand where are we supposed to put the comments.
Sorry?
Where are we supposed to put public comments?
Well, if you can... You can go to ADFNG's website and go to the Board of Game, and they have all their proposals for 2019. And then within the packet here, we actually gave you the proposals that are in those. And then there, you can actually just click a button and leave comment for each proposal in that aspect.
Right.
Yep. I mean...
I'd love to see something at the post office.
Right.
I agree from a staff aspect that this is sort of a political thing, and so it kind of puts us in a hairy position to write something to say, have you specifically called these proposals out, unless you want us to, but it puts us in a situation where we have to write, you know, something to put this out there when there's several other probably things that are going on as well, so...
I recognize that. We had asked in the last meeting for Mike to have the Resident Hunters of Alaska attend one of our meetings. It sounded like they were at Land Use. I wasn't there myself. And... But on the heels of one of the comments that we heard previously of, how am I just now finding out about this? Where can we possibly advertise this type of information? Agreed, it doesn't need to be political, but at the same time, I also don't want us to do anything without hearing from any potential bear hunters here in the Gerwood Valley. So, and I made that request last meeting to radio land that if anybody is a bear hunter that's got input, but it's not like there's like three, maybe two people listening to us right now. So once again, it's Proposal 116 and 121 on ADFNG's website. You have an opportunity to comment, and the deadline to comment on whether or not you want a bear station in the Gerwood Valley in our community, they're due on the 4th of March, which is the same deadline as the Gerwood Fire Department volunteer application.
And there is in the packet a map, and I'm looking at the map now, and on that map, you can go online and get the packet from the GBOS website. And so I'm looking at this, I assume it's the light blue area?
No.
No. It's the whole white area. Light blue is actually the color for the National Forest. So I just think...
So yellow is the...
14(c).
Oh.
And the white area is...
But you said it excludes Chugash State Park.
Right, but there's a lot of general state land up there. Not all of it is parkland.
Oh.
There's a lot going on up there.
Yeah, there's a lot of parkland up there. So we don't really know what is part of this area, what isn't?
Yes. Yeah. So the remainder of 14(c). So if it's not in yellow, that's the remainder of 14(c) within the red lines.
All around Lake George.
So it's...
What's showing you off is the blue because that shows you the boundaries of the Chugash National Forest.
So you're saying it's just the white areas?
No.
I need a pointer. Does anybody else know?
Let me get to the pointer. So this proposition would be for this right here.
The whole red area?
So the red area is all 14(c).
See the remainder of 14(c)? See that?
This is the primary... So it's confusing. The way to state and set it up is the primary 14(c) is the yellow, or the light brown right here. Everything else is remainder 14(c), and this green just shows you the boundaries of the Chugash National Forest within this red. And so this proposition would be for everything outside of 14(c), the primary 14(c). So this white, that arvaly right there...
I got it now.
And then the bear...
Thanks.
It would be within a mile of the structure.
And quarter mile of a trail.
Correct.
Okay, so I think what we've determined as a board is to encourage the public to comment.
I'll call Mark Donaghy tomorrow and see if we can put in the paper really quick, too.
Well, and anyone can put a flyer at the post office.
Yes, and it has to be... It has to be more of... Yes, and it has to be, it has to be more a private person. As a board, we can't like put up a flyer and say, comment on a political idea, but anybody in the public can, including board members.
I have one more question about, at Land Use, you said there wasn't a motion made. Was there discussion about making a motion or?
It was more informational with the, with the individual from the association giving information about the proposition, but out of it, there was nobody took up action.
Did anyone give opinions?
I don't, for something.
I don't remember and it was, as Carolyn said, it was a little, I would call it confusing also, the way he spoke. At first I thought he was speaking against it and then I realized he was a hunter speaking for it and he just kind of rambled through it and everyone, okay, and they went on to the next subject. Now it goes. Okay, where are we here? We're on 12. So discuss TV essay, first quarter revisions for 2019 parks and rec budget and 2019 road budget. So Kyle sent out, and that's to us, we're having a meeting on Wednesday. And do you want to talk at all to Kyle? I have one quick question and who do I have first?
Sure. So, quickly with the parks and rec budget, we're looking at a few changes there. One is I'd like to increase the tree removal from 2,000 to 3,000. I think that we have quite a bit of mitigation that we'll have to do between Lions Club Park and Forest Fair Park. And with that, I like to have a little bit more room so that we can deal with the trees they're taking down. In the past, we've had that $2,000 and we've been able to fall maybe seven, eight trees, but it's just a fall and cut. So they basically drop the tree for us and bucket and then it becomes something we have to deal with. So we'd like to have a little more room in there so that we can do some shredding and things like that, depending on what we do, and just sort of minimize our, our tree hazards in there. It may also be that maybe we can get some more time up in the trees and just doing some pruning and limbing, so we have to take down a bunch of trees. So, I'm asking for that. One thing that we've been having success with, and we've been working this within our budget, but I like to make it a line item this year, is a soccer field reseed. We've been aerating it and reseeding it each spring and we're really starting to see growth again there. We still got our wet spots, we still have our drainage problems, but where we don't, we're seeing thick grass starting to come up. And if we keep up with that, it really helps with like the Four Valley Soccer Program to have a real soccer field and real grass. So we're asking for $2,900 there, $3,000 more for, for that. And then on the back page, I want to increase our mill by about 75,000 more, 74,000 more. Our capital improvement fund contribution to 150,000 total. You, in the fall, approved it for 76,000. I'm, I'm a bit concerned with the way the crosswalk flasher and the cost and expense on it. It's going to deplete our, our capital fund. As I say, we're down to 68,000. And so I would like to increase that, especially with looking forward at the little bears replacement and getting, having funds available to continue on with the pre-development and get everything together so we can put a bond proposition out in time for 2020. We will need the tap towards that fund to make that happen. So, so those are the two things I'm asking therefore. And then the other thing I just wanted to include, and we can talk about this more on Wednesday, is what we're seeing for IGCs for 2019. When we did the budget in the fall, I just had to give you estimates. Basically, I just gave, I just kept what we had for 18 and they've given us indication now that the budgets have started, what the IGCs look like for this year. And overall, we're seeing IGCs go down because of the SAP thing. So, so we can talk more in detail about that, but I just wanted to give you a brief overview on that, so.
And we'll be talking about this on Wednesday.
Wednesday. I'll be looking for approval on Wednesday because we need to get our stuff turned in for first quarter revisions. And that's why I'm kind of, we're sort of pushing it so that we can get it in and get it done.
When, when you come on Wednesday, would you, I know it's just an estimate, but would you have an update on the total mill rate with the new?
Yes, I will. I have actually done that and that will be a good discussion point. And the other thing about that, and we'll get into it, is we don't know what assessed values are yet for, for Anchorage.
You know what mine is?
But I know that assessed values are going up.
Excuse me.
So, so we will talk about that.
Mine has gone up dramatically.
Yes. And then the other one is for the police. We are, we are dealing with the seat, the consumer price index increase for this year. We had one for 18, we had one for 19, and so I'd like to talk with you further about that and also put it into our budget. Because we run a very slim budget for the police. We only, we only really pull just a little bit more than the, the contract amount as is. And within the contract, that CPI increase is written in. And we did see increase last year. We're gonna probably see increase next year. And so we want to make sure we have that budget in there so we don't go over budget there with, with trying to keep up with the, those capital, or those consumer price index increase.
Well, thanks for following up on all that, doing all the calculations, Kyle. Appreciate it. It's good the SAP's cost is going down.
Yes, we can talk more about that.
Wednesday. Okay, next up, new agenda. Agenda item LUC 190204, discuss proposed changes to Gerwood parking requirements. Mike's not here.
Nothing on that, but we're putting that on here because Mike at some point is gonna come, it'll probably be tabled for March until he gets a proposal to you in April. We're just putting it on here as business.
Next up, review proposed procedures for LUC GBOS consideration of items outside the Gerwood Valley service area. In your packet, you have a, you know, what is called a?
Procedure.
Procedure, thank you. And it looks good to me. This is new business, so we will be considering it next month. Essentially, it says, the way after I read it, it's just that it's kind of the same way it is now, except it's kind of in official language, that somebody from the community has to bring up one of these issues that's outside of our normal general responsibilities. And if it's a, they want to determine whether if they're seeking group action from LUC GBOS or they're seeking action by individuals in the area. If it's an individual, petitioner will just public comment. And then if it's something they're looking for LUC and GBOS to comment on, they have to have this local person and ask to go through a process. And we'll review it next time.
Correct.
Do you agree K on that?
Yes, and LUC will have comment as well.
Next, Marco. Item, agenda item LUC 190206, introduction of dimensional variance, request for property at 119 Stowe Drive, Valley Escavation Number 5, Block 20, Lot 11, to place rock retaining wall and fill a maximum of 12 feet 4 inches into 25 foot stream setback to construct an elevated building pad. Petitioner will request an LUC recommendation for GBOS resolution with support after public review and full hearing in March 2019.
Hi, my name is Marco Zaccaro, P.O. Box 842 Gerwood. I'm with Z Architects. And this is an introduction for a dimensional variance that we will be presenting next month and requesting a resolution of support. The properties on Stowe Drive and Vale, the Swansons who own this property, they've owned it since 1999. They own a cabin that was built in 1978. That's grandfather. It's within the street setback. The street setback is just dark one here. This is their existing cabin, part of the driveways within the street setback. The dimensional variance will be to request that A, the existing cabin be removed down the street setback and the bank mitigated where the cabin is sitting. And they're gonna be building a new house completely out of the street setback, but because of the drainage issues by now, when this culvert is blocked, this, this stream is, I don't know if you've seen this, basically glorified drainage, which runs down the drainage way. And the culvert gets blocked and water runs down the driveway, runs in their crawl space, which they don't really like that much. So in their new house, they're proposing that the house get elevated so that it doesn't happen to their new garage. And in order to do that, we have to build it on this corner, the building pad about 400 feet, which means the total of the building pad is this dash line, which is, which is within the stream setback here, but it's essentially within the stream setback where their existing cabin is, that will be removed. So we consider this an improvement to the stream setback, it'll increase the permeable area and, and actually reduce the amount of built area within the stream setback. So, but we still require, are required to get a dimensional variance. And we'll say more next month.
Makes all sense, makes sense. So that was part of the, when they did that wetland mitigation change, I know they always said that if you come to them and say that you're making it better than it was.
Right. So, you know, the, the existing house is grandfathered, it was put in before our, that's about all the streets have that.
Yeah. Anyways, it's not a huge stream.
Right, yeah. Our, our.
Okay. Thanks, Marco. Thanks for waiting around. Any questions, any more questions for Marco? He's gonna be back, so. Okay. Number 16, agenda item LUC 190207, review proposed changes to GBOS LUC joint meetings for quarterly meeting to not less than twice annual schedule and make associated changes to LUC operating principles and GBOS rules and procedures. We discussed this in our joint meeting and I think everybody agreed that two meetings a month is enough. And we're just gonna incorporate that in our new procedures and that will come up as old business next month.
Correct.
And actually, there is no change needed in your procedures. We're just looking to make sure that everybody agrees that this seems like a good idea.
Have we heard anything from LUC in the contrary?
No, but they'll give us opinion next month.
It was new business for them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Agenda item LUC 190208, introduction of liquor license number 3558, transfer of Judge and Crosby to All That Silver LLC. And I don't see Raleigh here and I talked to him last night. I think he's waiting for more stock from the community, or for that community from the alcohol board.
They're early in the process and they may not have submitted all of their paperwork, but basically what he told us at the land use meeting is that he's purchasing Silver Tip and so the liquor license, of course, goes with it. I think it's just a beer wine license?
Yes.
So, anyway, this is more a step in the right direction so that when he does get everything back, you guys will be able to discuss it and make a decision. We'd probably be looking at a, a low note, wouldn't we?
Yeah, it just depends, but whatever you guys like to do. You can letter an objection or resolution.
I think it was a low note for the Aliyska one. A couple of times it's gone over.
Low note for a whole bunch of them a couple of months ago, was Silver Tip on that list?
Well, yeah, but this is a change of who will hold the license, so it would be a separate action.
I think, I think he did a resolution for Aliyska with their change in ownership, so.
That's because they have multiple restaurant avenues that license.
Yes, when it does come up, we should.
We'll figure out what.
I would probably say we won't see this for two months.
Yeah.
Well, check the news tonight. We'll see how, from who we hear it from.
Wait.
Done with these changes to the alcohol.
Oh, yeah. We'll see how it goes.
Next up, Gerwood Parks and Rec request for GBOS resolution of support for grant applications. Anchorage Park Foundation challenge grant to work on the Lower Iditarod, Nassau Sore Trail Phase 2, Ruane to Correlos.
Correlos, yep.
Application is due April 14, 2019.
So we will put a resolution in, two resolutions in front of you at the next meeting. We're going for Park Foundation grants, which are due coming up, and so we would like to have the Board of Supervisors support with those resolutions. And one will be for trail improvements on the Iditarod from Ruane up to Correlos, basically where the road comes up, the trail comes up to the, into the street here. And, and then for Lions Club, if Lions Club is motivated and willing to do it, having them apply for a grant for funding their park shelter that they would like to build in there. This grant only comes twice, it comes every two years, so we're trying to maximize what we can get in there in time for that.
Yeah, and then separately, the KMTA has a grant cycle that's open and our intent is to seek a grant for trail building tools. It's not a trail project, but trail equipment for our SCA volunteers.
So, that, I'm looking at the date.
And that one's, that one's due soon. So we'd like to throw this on the agenda for the meeting the day after tomorrow so that you can vote on that.
Perfect. And I would ask, are there any other items that haven't been assigned that anybody would like to bring up? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
15 minutes of stare, ladies and gentlemen. I was sure I was gonna have to do one. We're close to getting.
Got through the last part. I'm on a bike thing for a while, but other than that.
I think it was a really civil discussion.